Well, good morning, everyone. We are here on Tuesday, August the 2nd, 2022, and we're gathered at 901 Main Street in the heart of Old Town Conyers. Want to call our meeting to order at this time as we start out with the special recognitions and a presentation by Mr. Hahn. Is that the order we're going to go in?
Actually, I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Chairman. We have a long day of meetings. We will start the first at 10:00 a.m. with a public hearing on the millage rate. We will, after that concludes, roll right into the work session, and then tonight at 6:00 p.m. we have another public hearing relative to the millage rate. So we'll start with the millage rate this morning with Executive Director Lewis, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. And before Director Lewis comes up, I'm going to give Chief McDaniel and her support team an opportunity to take care of that crowd out there so that we can hear what's happening in here. I do understand that we are very limited on space this morning, so I want to make sure that we have order the way that we need order. But I cannot conduct a meeting if I've got a lot of competitive chatter and talk going on at the same time. If the folks on the outside would like to hear what's being said on the inside, I would ask that they would just hold it down so they can hear all of what is going to be said. My voice in addition to the microphone, I think, would do everybody pretty good justice. You'll be able to hear what's happening as we move forward. I also recognize, again, that we have an extremely large crowd. I'll tell you what I want you to do. Chief Cave, come on down, please. One thing, I've been around here since 2009, and we've had crowds well over the 300 folks. I'm pretty good when it comes to order and presiding over a crowd, so I need everybody to relax. We're going to be fine. The sheriff's office is here, the fire department is here, my mind is where it needs to be, and the citizens have a right to be heard. And I can guarantee you, every citizen in Rockdale County who has filled out and completed a red comment card will have an opportunity to be heard. I will afford that opportunity. I've done it many times before. We're going to do it again today. But guess what? We're going to do it in order, decency, and in respect. And I'm looking at a crowd of old schoolers. I know I'm not the only old schooler in this crowd, and we understand the word "respect." We certainly understand order, okay? Now, at this time, for the safety of the Board of Commissioners, Chief McDaniel and Chief Cave, I want to ask that you will close those doors right there in that lobby, right there, right now. Please, get those doors closed. I'm not going to be on CNN, I'm not going to be on national news. For security and safety of this proceeding, those doors will remain closed. How many deputies do I have?
Two.
Okay. Communicate a message to them that this door will not be open. Please make sure there's a message clear to them. In just a second, we're going to start this meeting, but I want to make sure everybody's communicated that that door will not be open. Commissioners, I need you to trust my leadership this morning. We're going to get through this meeting, and we're going to transition through our other meeting, and we're going to do it the way it needs to be done. All right. Now, at this time, I'll ask that our chief financial officer, Director Lewis, will come on up and move forward with our presentation of our budget hearing. Thank you, Director Relic and Chief Cave.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Washington. I'm Mark Lewis, CFO, Executive Director of Finance for Rockdale County. This is a presentation for the 2022 millage rate. Next slide, please. The advertised millage rate was 20.758. However, the proposed rate is 18.69. The advertised rate represented where the rate would have been if we had not used ARPA funds for operations this year. The injection of these funds allowed us to increase services without impacting the millage rate. Again, the proposed rate is 18.69. This rate breaks down as follows. 2022 revenues of $93,400,000, 2022 expenditures of $86,800,000, and debt associated with the courthouse improvement of $6,600,000. Next slide, please. A review of our budget allocation shows 48% of the budget is attributed to public safety, which includes sheriff, fire, and EMA. 30% of the budget is allocated to general government departments. 11% is allocated for court services with recreation parks and transportation at 6% and 5% respectively. Next slide, please. Highlights from our 2022 budget include the following. All current programs and services are funded. We have a balanced 2022 budget. Rockdale County continues to follow protocols concerning equipment, supplies, and services as it relates to the pandemic. Our senior services have provided over 111,000 meals to Rockdale seniors from the period of March 31st, 2020, to June 30th, 2022. And our Parks and Recs Department began the programming of the Grady Jarrett Resource Opportunity Center with the implementation of esports. Some additional highlights. Next slide, please. Some additional highlights include the following. Our public safety has established a mobile medic response team for rapid response at events and emergencies. Our emergency management agency has purchased a new 911 building. Our animal control services has completed the grand opening of the animal services shelter expansion, and the Board of Elections and Voter Registration relocated to a new building with larger space. Next slide, please. This slide shows our tax digest since 2010. As a reminder, the tax digest is a total value of all property in Rockdale County. In 2021, the tax digest was at $2.9 billion, and at 2022, the tax digest is at $3.7 billion. Next slide, please. Here we have the history of the millage rate. Since 2010, it shows that in 2015 through 2019, a millage rate of 20.19. In both 2020 and 2021, we took a rollback, and that was 18.02 in 2020 and 16.69 in 2021. We are proposing a rate of 18.69 for FY '22. Next slide, please. The overall property tax allocation shows 82% going towards school maintenance and operations, and 18% going towards accounting maintenance and operations. These calculations are based upon the 2022 homestead property, which also includes the host exemption. Next slide, please. The host exemption, this slide shows the host exemption since 2017. With the millage rate of 18.69, the host exemption would be $20.3 million. The exemptions, again, are the total credits received by residential property owners, and even with the rollback rates, the total credits have increased over the last years. Next slide, please. Here we have a sample calculation of the millage rate, again, at the 18.69 rate. For a property with a value of $250,000, the estimated property tax with exemption and 70% host would be $476.60. In 2021, that tax was $425.60, which is an increase of $51. Estimated property tax at the same $250,000 property tax without the exemption is $1,869.00, and in 2021, without the exemption, it was $1,669.00, which would be an increase of $200. Next slide, please. This is the first of our public hearings on the millage rate. We have another one scheduled for today at 6:00 p.m., and then a third one scheduled for August 9th at 10:00 a.m. The Board will actually set the millage rate on August 16th at 6:00 p.m. Thank you, and now we move on to the next part of the agenda.
Thank you, Director Lewis. Thank you so much, and thank you to the Finance Department for this presentation this morning, and we look forward to hearing you again this evening. Director Relic, at this time, I think we're opening up for a public comment.
So, Mr. Chairman, yes, that is correct, and I want to remind everybody this morning is a millage rate public hearing. Each person signed up to speak with the red card. Will be allotted three minutes per speaker. We'll have the timer going, but it is about the millage rate, and this is part of the public hearing, so we will move into that section right now.
Thank you so much, and I just want to add to that that I am going to allow every person who has signed up to speak regarding the millage rate during this time of public comment, we will afford them that opportunity. We will not rush through it. We will allow them their three minutes as allotted by the timer, and we will allow everyone to have that opportunity to speak. So at this time, if you would bring me those cards, I will begin to call those names up for those individuals, and I think there's going to be a coordination between the chief and Chief McDaniel with making sure that anybody that's not physically inside the Assembly Hall who may be outside will make sure we announce their names out there as well.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. Chief McDaniel will be receiving the red public comment cards and will be giving them to Chief Jamie Cave, and he will hand them to you and make sure we get to every person who wants to speak. Thank you.
Sounds like we got a well-organized system. Very good.
Ladies and gentlemen, are there any people inside the Assembly Hall that are currently holding a red card? Just want to make sure I have them all from inside. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right. The very first one I have is a gentleman, and I'm going to try my best to read these names properly. Mr. Charles Herman.
I'm going to respectfully pass if my numbers aren't coming up with the numbers I just saw here.
Mr. Herman, I want to say thank you for coming out this morning, and certainly do appreciate your interest, and I want to encourage you to watch this proceeding as we move forward. I do want to make mention that this is a hearing. Myself and the Commissioners, we will not be making a decision today. There will not be a vote taking place today. We will go through the three required hearings that we must offer to the public, and we're going to hear from everyone in Rockdale County that wants to speak. At the end of that, we have a date that we're going to make a decision. What is that date?
Mr. Chairman, that date will be Tuesday, August 9th. We have, I'm sorry, Tuesday, August 16th, thank you, Chief Cave, at 6:00 p.m.
Tuesday, August 16th. Myself and the two Commissioners will render a vote and make a decision. This is a wonderful opportunity for us to hear from each and every citizen. So I'm getting ready to call up some additional names for those who want to come forth with public comment during the millage rate hearing, but I just wanted to make sure I explain that so you would not think that today there will be a vote taking place. We're going to hear from everybody, and then your Commissioners can do as they please. Laura Skelton. Thank you, ma'am. So what I'm going to do, Chief Cave and Director Relic and Chief McDaniel, for the folks who are non-responsive, I'm going to put them in the non-responsive stack. At the end of those who have an opportunity to speak, I'm going to call them again. We'll make sure we do everything we can to afford everybody the opportunity. So staff, all the directors, you may want to go ahead and contact your deputy director. We're going to be here. Mr. George Kellecheck. Mr. George Kellecheck.
Okay, do we have Ms. Skelton? Yes.
Okay. Tell Ms. Skelton, come on up. Good morning, Ms. Skelton.
I think I'm going to pull my mask down.
Take your time and relax.
Okay. All right. Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning.
Commissioners. I'm Laura Skelton, and I've lived here in Rockdale County since 1989, and I've seen a lot of changes since then. There's others who have lived here even longer than me, and I'm sure I speak for them as well. Many of us have gotten acquainted, you could see out there, and joined together in an ongoing discussion of what we need as taxpayers of Rockdale. And we're so looking forward to our property taxes going down, as was promised two to three years ago. Those of us owning homes for as long as we have would have just that much more in our budgets to improve our own properties. Instead, we've watched our property bills increase exponentially over the years and not seen real improvements that we actually needed throughout the county. This excludes our fire and police, which we depend on first and foremost. We implore you to stop the outrageous spending and adding the extraneous items to the county budget with each voting session. If you would only listen to the taxpaying citizens of Rockdale County, we could help guide our Commissioners to make those decisions that truly help all citizens of Rockdale County. So get ready to open your ears and listen. There's a lot of wisdom to be imparted from the citizens of Rockdale County. This county, Rockdale, as small as it is, could be the shining star and the leader to execute many things that may be needed in all counties of the state of Georgia. We are proud to be citizens of Rockdale County. There are some very smart people who live here and care so much about what goes on in this county. So get ready to listen and heed the taxpayers who care, that pay for much in Rockdale County, including your salaries. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skelton, and thank you for, thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. I did see Mr. Kellecheck, so go ahead and bring Mr. Kellecheck right on in, please.
Good morning, Board, citizens of Rockdale County. Ida Wells once said, "The way to right wrongs is to turn the light of truth upon them." Ladies and gentlemen, this county, this city, needs to open up their books. Over 18 months ago, the Commissioners that are present here today asked for a forensic audit. It has never been accomplished. The Rockdale Water Resources Authority, in a meeting that I was present, asked for a forensic audit and also an attorney to represent them. This was granted by you, Mr. Chairman. It never happened. We need to have a CPA, independent firm, provide a forensic audit for this county and all the citizens and all the taxpayers. I don't understand, and the members of the Eyes of Taxpayer Association do not understand why you are being apprehensive. Are you scared? Are you afraid? Let's have the forensic audit. Let's look at the overall numbers. Last week, the Board of Education approved an 11.6% increase. If we have $150,000 home in Rockdale County, if this proposed tax increase goes through, it's going to be an $850 increase for that homeowner, $104 stormwater fee. We're spending an additional $493 for goods and services versus June 2020 versus 2021. If you add all of those numbers up, we're going to have to come up with an additional $6,090 per year to pay for these services. Mr. Chairman, in 2020, in front of a group of us for homeowners or better government, I asked the question, are we going to build any more parks? Since then, we've got three more. You always told me you're a man of your word. You've not kept it. So, again, the membership, I have the Taxpayer Association.
I'm gonna respectfully pass with my numbers on coming up with the numbers I just saw here.
Mr. Herman, I want to say thank you for coming out this morning and certainly do appreciate your interest and I want to encourage you to watch this proceeding as we move forward. I do want to make mention that this is a hearing. Myself and the Commissioners, we will not be making a decision today. There will not be a vote taking place today. We will go through the three required hearings that we must offer to the public. And we're gonna hear from everyone in Rockdale County that wants to speak. At the, at the end of that, we have a date that we're gonna make a decision. What is that date?
Mr. Chairman, that date will be Tuesday, August the 9th. We have a, I'm sorry, Tuesday, August the 16th, thank you Chief Cabe, at 6:00 PM.
Tuesday, August the 16th. Myself and the two Commissioners will render a vote and make a decision. This is a wonderful opportunity for us to hear from each and every citizen. So I'm getting ready to call up some additional names for those who want to come forth with public comment during the village rate hearing. But I just wanted to make sure, uh, explain that so you would not think that today there will be a vote taking place. We're gonna hear from everybody and then your Commissioners can do, um, as they please. Laura Skelton, Ms. Laura Skelton. Let's make sure we're not missing Ms. Laura Skelton on the outside. Laura Skelton, we'll give her a chance to make her way to the auditorium. Okay, alright, so here's what, thank, thank you Chief. Laura Skelton, S-K-E-L-T-O-N. Thank you, ma'am. So what I'm going to do, Chief Cabe and Director Rulich and Chief McDaniel, for the folks who are non-responsive, I'm gonna put them in the non-responsive stack. At the end of those who have an opportunity to speak, I'm gonna call them again. We'll make sure we do everything we can to afford everybody the opportunity. So staff, for all the directors, you may want to go ahead and contact your Deputy Director. We gonna be here. Mr. George Kellecheck. Mr. George Kellecheck.
No Kellecheck, this is Ms. uh, Skelton.
Okay, do we have Ms. Skelton?
Yes.
Okay, alright, tell Ms. Skelton, come on up.
Thank you. Somebody want to help us? Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Skelton.
I think I'm gonna pull my mask down.
Take your time and relax.
Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning.
Commissioners, I'm Laura Skelton and I've lived in, here in Rockdale County for, since 1989 and I've seen a lot of changes since then. There's others who have lived here even longer than me and I'm sure I speak for them as well. Many of us have gotten acquainted, you could see out there, and joined together in an ongoing discussion of what we need as taxpayers of Rockdale. And we're so looking forward to our property taxes going down, as was promised two to three years ago. Those of us owning homes for as long as we have would have just that much more in our budgets to improve our own properties. Instead, we've watched our property bills increase exponentially over the years and not seen real improvements that we actually needed throughout the county. This excludes our fire and police, which we depend on first and foremost. We implore you to stop the outrageous spending and add the, adding the extraneous items to the county budget with each voting session. If you would only listen to the taxpaying citizens of Rockdale County, we could help guide our Commissioners to make those decisions that truly help all citizens of Rockdale County. So get ready to open your ears and listen, there's a lot of wisdom to be imparted from the citizens of Rockdale County. This county, Rockdale, as small as it is, could be the shining star and the leader to execute many things that may be needed in all counties of the state of Georgia. We are proud to be citizens of Rockdale County. There are some very smart people who live here and care so much about what goes on in this county. So get ready to listen and heed the taxpayers who care, that pay for much in Rockdale County, including your salaries. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skelton, and thank you for, thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. I did see Mr. Kellecheck, so go ahead and let, bring Mr. Kellecheck right on in, please.
Good morning, Board, citizens of Rockdale County. Ida Wells once said, "The way to right wrongs is to turn the light of truth upon them." Ladies and gentlemen, this county, this city, needs to open up their books. Over eighteen months ago, the Commissioners that are present here today asked for a forensic audit. It has never been accomplished. The Rockdale Water Resources Authority, at a meeting that I was present, asked for a forensic audit and also an attorney to represent them. This was granted by you, Mr. Chairman. It never happened. We need to have a CPA, independent firm, provide a forensic audit for this county and all the citizens and all the taxpayers. I don't understand, and the members of the Eyes of Taxpayer Association do not understand why you are being apprehensive. Are you scared? Are you afraid? Let's have the forensic audit. Let's look at the overall numbers. Last week, the Board of Education approved an 11.6% increase. If we have $150,000 home in Rockdale County, if this proposed tax increase goes through, it's gonna be an $850 increase for that homeowner. $104 stormwater fee. We're spending an additional $493 for goods and services versus June 2020 versus 2021. If you add all of those numbers up, we're gonna have to come up with an additional $6,090 per year to pay for these services. Mr. Chairman, in 2020, in front of a group of us for homeowners or better government, I asked the question, are we gonna build any more parks? Since then, we've got three more. You always told me you're a man of your word, you've not kept it. So, again, the membership, I have the Taxpayer Association, is a worldwide association. If this goes through, you will be noted for having the highest tax increase ever in the state of Georgia in these great United States. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kellecheck, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Next up is Ms. Patricia Barbary, Barbary. Let's make sure we announce it out there a few times, Chief, so that we don't overlook Ms. Barbary. Come on up, Ms. Barbary, how are you this morning?
Hot and tired.
Yes, ma'am. Well, take your time and pull that mic down so we can hear you there a little bit. Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
The reason I'm here is because, wait a minute, I don't speak good in crowds. I'm 79 years old and I'm gonna fix ten cup and my taxes have gone from $350 all the way until $100. I'm not gonna be able to stay at my home if it continues to rise and I'm over there. So y'all need to think about us instead of all the fancy stuff you wanna put in these buildings and in the offices and quit adding more and more apartments. They're putting a couple hundred across the street from me and it's gonna, it's just gonna be tragic for Rockdale County if you continue to go with taxes and you're gonna lose a lot more people moving out of the county. That's all I can tell you, I'm just really upset about it.
Well, thank you, Ms. Barbary, for coming out this morning and we've heard you loud and clear and we appreciate all that you do for the citizens. Thank you so much. Next, we have Ms. Angela Wimter.
Angela Wimter?
It's, yes.
Angela Wimter or something like that? Angela?
So what we're gonna do, Chief, is we're gonna call, I'm gonna call you perhaps two or three and you can stage a few of them in the vestibule out there and then we'll have them ready. That'll help us with our time a little bit. So I'm gonna put Ms. Angela Wimter in the standby category and then I'm gonna call just three of us as I yield to Commissioner Washington.
Why don't you do, to, to, like, the, the, and, 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 and,[892.62]
Between the county, the city, and the school. Now, I'm all for education. But as a senior, not having any kids in the school system, I think there should be some concession rate. I don't mind paying taxes, but I don't think that I should have to pay the full amount. And when I look at what you have here, a forty-five percent proposed tax increase, and I'm already doing fifty-eight hundred a year, you guys are gonna run me out of my house. I came down here for retirement. And I'm, 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 I'm not saying that I'm going to be able to stay with, if, if, if we continue with these rates, tax increases that we're planning to put on. And I know that I'm not the only one that feels the same way. Tell you something. I'm a pioneer. You guys are sitting here because of what I've done before you came along. I'm seventy-eight years old. So either you're appointed or you're elected. So, but I don't see that anything's coming out of the people that, don't get me wrong, the people that are in office, that's taking care of the citizens, all of those people outside. And I think it's pretty much ridiculous, guys, I do. But, you know, and I know it's not easy, I know it's not easy. But since you are elected and appointed, it has to be a way that you can find out how to take care of your citizens in Rockdale County.
So Sergeant, um, let me say thank you for coming out. I went a little bit over your time, but I want to say thank you for your service and thank you for all that you do on behalf of our citizens here in Rockdale County. Uh, we hear you loud and clear. I want to give some other folks an opportunity to come up and have their voice heard as well. Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause. Donald Parker.
Donald Parker.
Okay, uh, Dr. Ben Hibbler.
Dr. Ben Hibbler.
And Mr. David Anderson. Mr. Hibbler, come on up, Mr. Hibbler, good morning.
Good morning, sir. How are you all doing?
Doing well. Go right ahead.
I would like to, my concern is also, at forty-five or forty-six percent, the individuals that own fixed income, that's my biggest concern.
Yes, sir.
They don't have the wherewithal to do the increase, and we don't want to run them out of their own properties. People have been here, as they said to you earlier, thirty, forty, fifty years, and now they're at a point where they're in, uh, adult, they're a senior citizen now, and they really just can't absorb what, what you're saying. And my thought is, can we pare back on some of the projects that we are willing, that we want to do, and take it at a slower rate, slower pace, and raise the tax incrementally slow? Give them opportunities to try to absorb that. And so, we're, I mean, we're all at the mercy of this commission here, and all the senior citizens here, and I love the children, I got kids, I got grandkids. Schools are important. But what can we pare back on that will allow us to not to have to raise the tax so much so fast and impact a lot of people in a very negative way? And as the gentleman said before, I'm for taxes, but sensible taxes. And this country's been built on the senior citizens that we have now. So we shouldn't try to destroy them, put them in such distress where they are not able to live in their own home, they have to move out. So I'm just saying, hey, have a little compassion, a little mercy when you're making the decision. What can we not do right now? What can we put off? What can we delay? Somewhere to make our increases in taxes at a small increment, a forty-five percent, they're gonna bite a lot of us. And I think that's, and if, in each homeowner is gonna have to pay forty-five percent more, that's gonna be a big cut out of their budget, and some will actually bust their budget. Thank you for your time.
Dr. Hibbler, thank you so much, and thank you for what you do on behalf of all the citizens here in Rockdale County.
You are.
Thank you so much. Do we have a Mr. David Anderson?
No answer.
No Anderson, uh, no Donald Parker?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. We're moving on to the next three. The next three will be a Mr. Spencer Hay, Mrs. Velma Gaus, Spencer Hay, Ms. Velma Gaus, and a, looks like a Ms. Lori Filson. Chief, I think I'm gonna give you the ones that I just called so they can keep account. I think that will help, that was one of the suggestions from Commissioner Washington. I think that'd be a good idea to do that. I've, I've called her name?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am, come on up, please, let her out, please. Yes, ma'am, give me your name, give me your name again.
Lori Filson, P-H-I-L-S-O-N.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we don't have a lot of time here, three minutes is not a lot allocated for someone's voice to be heard. I'm represented with the voices of Rockdale because I think the voices in Rockdale has been shut down for too long. Now, you have come to my concerns within Rockdale, I've been here six years, retired, two thousand four, Law Department, New York City, been here, was blessed to pay off my house, um, in the incriminating things that I keep seeing the taxes. So we, so we know why we're here, as well as you know why we're here. My thing is, Mr. Williams comes with these big graphs, his running numbers in my damn head that we don't even know what the hell is going on. Some of the information that's privy to you and the government is not even privy to us. I had one occasion where I went to vote, I had to find out my neighbor that the location was changed. What are we talking about here? We are residents of Rockdale. If you know, I should know. If things need to be notified, then it needs to be sent out on paper. This meeting here is a joke, because you know, as well as the board, that you was gonna have an outpouring. You should've chose a better space, okay? I'm not coming down here to dump on you, but if you eat, I gotta eat. And I can't see my taxes going up. I am sixty-one, I retired at forty. Somebody gotta unhosted a gun. I don't care, I'm not intimidated by titles and all of that nonsense, that don't make me. We have to live together. You talking about feeding the damn senior people, where you gonna feed them in the street? Where you gonna feed them? What they gonna eat? Even Jesus sat at the table with Judas, so where they gonna eat? That's what I want to know. So we, we're tired, I want to come with friendly fire. I don't want to come with fire where I am coming and, and, and dampening on people or, or prosecuting people, I don't want to do that. I was offended as I sat here in the audience, I'm not impressed with suits and all that, that don't impress me. Like passes and all that don't impress me, I walk on my own accord. Someone said to their audience, and he know who he is, I'm not gonna point him out, "Do they have popcorn?" No, he wanna eat some popcorn, because I'm telling you, as a city girl, I gotta get new to this country shit, because let me tell you something, things gotta change. Somebody's gonna be unseated. Yeah, you could look around, but I'm not even gonna deal with you because you, you, you play your own stuff, I ain't messing with you. You shouldn't even be sitting there. But something has to be changed, Mr. Nesbit.
Yes.
Something has to be changed, so you showed up at many, my time's not over.
Well, no, no, let, let me, let me say this to you, Ms. Filson, slow down just for a second.
Okay, I'm gonna slow down.
That means, that means I'm about to talk.
Yeah, because you know I'm not, yeah.
So you gonna go back and forth with me?
No, I'm not, no, I'm not.
Okay, so, so listen.
I'm listening.
What I've just done was allow you to break the rules. Listen to me.
Okay, alright.
Listen, listen to me.
Yes, sir.
I told you this morning that I feel your pain. Now, you told me you from New York, I can hear it and see it.
I'm listening.
Listen to me.
I'm listening.
The profanity is a violation of our policy.
I apologize.
I've got some young people watching this broadcast, and I've got some young people sitting in this audience.
Absolutely.
We do have to set an example. Let me share with you.
Yes, sir.
Myself and my colleagues, we clearly empathize with every citizen in this county. And I said to you, you just told me you're sixty-one years old, that one thing we're gonna do is have order and respect.
Absolutely.
So I'm just using that word, 'cause I can hear the voice of our elders when they explain the definition of the word "respect."
Yes, sir.
You've got a few more minutes left on the clock.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna ask that you compose yourself.
Yes, sir.
And articulate your message so that you can represent the voices.
Right.
For Rockdale County.
Right.
Can we do that?
We can do that.
Okay.
And I, and I, and I apologize if we could take the minutes.
It's okay, so I'm gonna instruct the timekeeper.
Yes.
Start the clock where it is.
Yes.
And we'll run it through there, okay?
Absolutely.
Take a look, I want you to take a look.
I don't need a look.
Okay, alright, very, go right ahead.
I don't need a look, and I don't need a script, I'm just saying that you come out to many events showing yourself, but we're you showing yourself worthy. Is, is, is this decision concreted? Okay, you've been sitting for too long, you say two thousand nine, and I apologize. I even apologize to the young lady over there that the dad or whoever's trying to come out and make a difference and show her what the government is about. But is this what our government is about? Are we not in this melting pot together? Are you not a Rockdale resident? Does this affect you? So you know why we're here. Where is our pain gonna be comforted?
Thank you, Ms. Filson.
God bless you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, and I apologize again, okay?
No problem, it's all good, thank you, ma'am. Okay, next three, did we, did we satisfy those three?
No answer.
Okay, alright, let's make sure we keep up with those that didn't answer so that I can put them in the stack and we'll, we'll make another attempt to call them at the close of our meeting. Thank you so much. And I want to ask Executive Director Rutledge, if you would, just take another moment and read our disclaimer.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the typical disclaimer this morning will be a little bit different in the sense that this is a public hearing. So every person will be allotted three minutes to speak relative to the millage rate public hearing that's before us this morning. And you will remember to address your comments to the chairman and not the audience, but to make sure that you adhere to your three minutes and the respect, and I think the chairman was pretty clear about the, uh, no tolerance for profanity, so thank you.
Thank you, Director Rutledge. Uh, at this time, we have Ms. Beverly Thomas, Evan McWilliams, and Ms. Charlotte Garrett.
Good morning, Ms. Thomas.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners and all those that are in attendance. Um, I've been a resident of Rockdale County for five years. I'm also a trustee of the Conyers Rockdale Library System. I'm a retired federal executive. So I'm speaking to you all today for those who cannot speak for themselves. I applaud the efforts of this board and all that all of our officials have done for Rockdale County. I'm on a fixed income as well as many others that have spoken. I refinanced a few years ago to make my mortgage affordable. But last year taxes increased, that pretty much brought my mortgage back to where it was before I refinanced. As a former leader, it was important for me to consider all aspects of a situation before making a decision. Today's world is in turmoil, as you all know. High cost of health insurance, disrespect across all ages, gun violence, mental health, and most recently, the issue of abortion rights. As a society, how much more can we take? America was supposed to be the land of the free. We cannot control what happens outside of Rockdale County, but we can control what happens in Rockdale County. We depend on all of you all to protect us. I urge you, before you vote, to please take into consideration our seniors, those that have health challenges, those that are on reduced income, and those that will be greatly impacted if this vote passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We know, this is Ms. Charlotte Garrett, she's, come on up, Ms. Charlotte.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, good morning, is it still morning? Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. I may need my glasses. Alright, Rockdale County, August twenty-second, tax sale, Sheriff's sale. Tisa Spark, Washington, ex officio Sheriff, State of Georgia, County of Rockdale. Certain tax, five F A, issued by the Tax Commissioner of Rockdale County, Georgia, in favor of the Rockdale County School Board and County of Rockdale against the following named persons and the property as described immediately below their respective names. They will be sold for cash or certified funds in public outcry before the Rockdale County Auditorium, nine oh three North Main Street, right next door, between the hours of sale on the first Tuesday of August, the same being August second, which is today, between the hours of ten AM and four PM. This is the reality of what happens when people can't pay their property taxes. They get taxed out of their homes, they lose the home that they've been paying on forever, they thought it would be their forever home. They thought that this was a good county to live in. People who want to live in Rockdale County are people who wish they lived in Rockdale County. Well, maybe they wish they lived in Rockdale County, and now they're getting taxed out of their homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett. They spoke already? Okay, okay, alright, thank you. Alright, next up is Mr. Nicholas Duva and Ms. Ruth Kelvey. Also, Ms. Phyllis Samuels. Started with Mr. Nicholas Duva, Ms. Ruth Kelvey, and Ms. Phyllis Samuels, in that order, please.
Okay, good morning. It's funny, every time I come to one of these millage, uh, meetings, it turns out to be a similar story. It appears that there's usually a miscommunication to the public as to what the intention is versus, uh, you know, uh, what reality is. In this case, uh, I think one of the reasons why we have this big of a turnout is because the local paper on July something indicated that the proposal was to increase the mill rate from sixteen point something up to twenty point something. And that's not what you're talking about, you're talking about eighteen point something. So I think, you know, uh, you know, uh, if, if they had reported it accurately, I think people would've been a little bit less concerned.
Yes.
Okay? Um, the, uh, and then it also looks like that eighteen point whatever is not really so much an increase, but going back to a previous rate, is that correct? 'Cause it used to be eighteen point something at a few years ago, right?
Well, um, so here's what I won't do, I, I won't get into the position of repeating our CFO because he's done a fantastic job. Let me say this, and I, and I really do appreciate your approach and demeanor, Mr. Duva. All of the information provided is on our website and will be on our website. All of this information is clear, county, open records, information that's privy to all of the citizens of Rockdale County. Uh, this evening, we're gonna host another one of these settings, uh, these hearings so that folks can hear. The CFO will start off, just like he did this morning, explaining what the numbers are. He will talk about that proposed forty-five percent and what the actual eighteen point six nine is, is what is being proposed at this time. And he'll break it down and explain it. What I want to encourage folks to do is to stay in tune and to stay in touch. What we'd like to see, honestly, with the business of Rockdale County, is to have an overflow crowd almost every week of folks being involved with what's going on in their community. I will, uh, agree that there's been some, um, miscommunication, to say the least, and I think that's, uh, I believe that leadership is ownership, so that's a responsibility that, uh, I want to take full control of myself in terms of making sure that we communicate properly as to not to mislead any of our citizens or to get a crowd emotionally disturbed to the point of thinking that we're trying to put people out of their house. Uh, let me just tell you, I speak clearly for myself and my colleagues that not one of us are trying to put anybody out of their house. Is, is there any more you would like to point out? 'Cause I think you, you've been pretty clear as to what has happened here.
Okay, um, yeah, well, one thing I'm sure you'll take into consideration before you do the final vote is that, um, the property assessments, um, have gone up, I'm imagining, for everybody, mine was about seven percent. Um, so, uh, you know, and that's fine, you know, but, you know, when you're determining the millage rate, that's something, obviously, I think you should take into consideration. And then, um, uh, I don't understand how the, the host works. Um, but if sales are higher this year than they were last year, would that offset some of the tax or, or not? I'm not, I'm not clear on that.
So, so, so that we don't confuse, so that myself and my colleagues don't confuse any of the folks who are watching this broadcast, any of the people that's here, uh, I'm gonna continue to yield to the CFO. I'm also gonna continue to yield to our chief tax assessor, uh, for the Tax Assessor's Department for information, and, and so that, because that's been one of the problems, and that's obviously one of the problems that we see this morning. There's been mounds of miscommunication. Uh, I'd rather the content expert be the person to deliver the information so that it's delivered correctly. Our offices all stand open and available to entertain anyone that has questions concerning, um, their assessment, uh, the difference between, um, the property value and the difference between a millage rate increase, and there are some differences, and the fact that we're one of only two counties in the entire state that has host. Some people really don't know what that is, uh, they didn't know they benefited from it by moving into Rockdale County. Uh, and so, so there's a lot of miscommunication. This setting is not, uh, laid out to go that deep into detail. What we want to do this morning is make sure we've done our due diligence about having the hearing, giving folks an opportunity to speak. And that's what we're doing with yourself and several others. And I want to make sure we afford that opportunity. And, uh, what I'm not gonna be able to do each, with each speaker, is repeat this over and over.
Right.
Because I do understand, I'm not sure if everybody can hear me out there, they may or may not. Uh, I understand that. Uh, there'll be another hearing this afternoon. Uh, I will tell you, there is no forty-five percent, uh, increase, uh, coming out of this board. Um, as you've heard from the CFO this morning, uh, the proposed number at this time is eighteen point six nine. Um, the commissioners and I are going to hear today, this evening, and the next hearing, and then we'll make a decision on the sixteenth of August. So I'm gonna stop there and give you a chance to wrap up with your time.
Alright, um, you know, one thing would help us as citizens if we understood, uh, and I'd ask you to explain it now, but, um, uh, if it would be, um, it's easier for us to understand why is it being considered to change the mill rate up or down? Because some years you put it down.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so the more we can understand as citizens as to why it might, uh, uh, you know, cause us to have like less concern or, or what have you.
So let me say that I agree with you that, um, we need to do a different job, a different job with relaying and communicating and disseminating the information. Uh, I will suggest that as we need to do a different job, uh, I want to suggest that the citizens make sure when they are seeking the information, they are seeking it from the source itself. Uh, there are multiple people in the community who are not qualified to repeat and explain and teach. Uh, and I'm asking that when folks are seeking information, they come straight to the source. And when you come to me, and if I don't know, I'm gonna point you to the educated source that can explain it the proper way, okay?
Okay, um, and, uh, we only are given three minutes, so if someone has something a little more detailed that they want to send you, can they just email you?
Yes, sir.
Then you can review it.
So, so, thank you so much, Mr. Duva. We've already received multiple emails, all of our email addresses are listed on the county website. We are a county, we do have a website, and all of our emails are there. Also, the contact numbers to the Office of the Board of Commissioners is located there as well. Um, I have said it for years, and I believe that three out of every five residents certainly have my number, and, and people text me, so you can text me. And even when you text me, and I don't have the answer, know the answer, I'll redirect you to someone that knows. So several things we've covered this morning in your presentation. Number one, um, there has been some miscommunication. Number one, we need to do a better job and a different job with disseminating the information out. Uh, we've got another hearing this evening, and then another one to come, and then on the sixteenth of August, we will render a decision, we being myself and the colleagues of the commissioners here on the board, but no decision will be made today. But I tell you, we hear you very loud and clear.
Um, alright, um, I, I do notice that usually by the fourth meeting or the third meeting, it's a lot easier for people to understand on the first one, because you don't know what we don't know, and, and vice versa. And the other thing is, people get confused and they, sometimes they think that you have something to do with the Board of Education mill rate, and that's really, if someone's concerned about taxes, that's where the big burden is, it's not police and fire and all the rest of that.
Yes, sir, and, and Mr. Duva, thank you for understanding that. Um, I, I think, honestly, that will probably continue to be somewhat of a misunderstanding. Uh, the Board of Education is its own entity. Uh, they have a school superintendent and a CEO who run the day-to, day-to-day operations of the school system. But the elected members of the Board of Education are those elected members who, um, determine what the rates will be for the board. They have their own website, which announces when they're having their, their regular board meetings, not just their millage rate hearing, but their regular board meetings. Um, whether you have a, a school-aged young person or not, you are a tax-paying citizen in, in Rock, Rockdale County, so therefore, you are more than welcome to attend their meetings, uh, because it's through your tax dollars the schools are able to operate and do what they do. Uh, but a lot of folks don't know that. Rockdale County Board of Commissioners serve as the dominant government in this community. A lot of folks, just in their mind, think that we control everything. Well, we don't. There is a Board of Education, and there is a City of Conyers. But because we have a microphone, a platform, and a television station, uh, folks think that we are the one-stop shop, and honestly, we're not. But that's okay, that's what leadership is about. And I, hopefully, I've just explained that and cleared a little bit of that up uh, for folks to be able to distinguish between the Board of Commissioners, the Board of Education, and the City of Conyers.
So even if we don't have children, we're allowed to go to the Board of Education meetings?
Yes, sir, you, you pay taxes whether you have children or not. So you are, yes, sir. You don't, it, it's not limited to parents, okay? It's, it's, it's open for taxpayers in Rockdale County. In fact, if they relied just on the parents, they couldn't operate the schools. They've gotta rely on all the citizens of the county. Your voice about the threshold of age or when that should be cut off a citizen, that has to be taken up. In fact, there's two entities that will address that issue. The Board of Education and your state representatives and state senators. The Board of Commissioners absolutely have zero authority in terms of what the cutoff age is for a taxpayer to contribute to the taxes for the local school system. We don't control that. The Board of Education and your state representatives and your state senators, those are the people to impress upon who can influence that decision and make some changes.
Okay, so thank you very much. I feel like I took up too much time.
No, 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 thank you, I think, and I hope that this has been informative for some other folks as well. Thank you, Mr. Duva. Ms. Kelvey, good morning. Ms. Kelby, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners and fellow Rockdale citizens. My name is Ruth Kelby. I've been living in Conyers for 28 years. I came out of the military, I'm a disabled vet, and I own my house. But my taxes are going way up. And I don't understand. When I moved here, we had so many, Rockdale County was beautiful. And it's changed so much, we lost so much, but yet our taxes is going up. We have nothing for our kids to do, that's why they're in trouble all the time. When I moved here, we had so much to do. My child and children that I raised up, we always had somewhere to go on the weekends. There, there's nothing for none of the kids, but yet the taxes go up. Yeah, we got all these parks, and I, I go to every one of Rockdale Parks. But they're not clean like they used to be. But yet taxes are going up. I don't understand where all the money's going. We didn't have school. I don't understand why the budget was still the same. And I went to the Board of Education. No, I don't have no children, that's in school anymore. Matter of fact, when my son moved back to Georgia, I wouldn't recommend Rockdale County. Because when I moved here, we had a school of excellence. That's why I moved to this county, for the country and city living. Now I don't see that, I don't see the country living anymore. Everything is building up so fast. But yet, and we had nice places to go, nice eating places. Not all these fast food stuff, all these liquor stores. I don't understand why we got all that stuff. And where all our taxes is going when we have nothing that I had 28 years ago. That's, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Ms. Kelby, thank you so much, and certainly appreciate your service and taking the time to come out this morning. I do want to share one thing with you. You may not be aware, and I want to kind of bring you up to speed a little bit. We do have a very robust Parks and Recreation Department here in Rockdale County. And we have a very busy program of activities and events that run through our Parks and Recreation, not just limited to Johnson Park. But we have a summer concert going on here at Costly Mill. And I want to encourage you to be sure to go and visit, if you haven't in a while, go visit the county website. And you will see that there are tons of things for your children and grandchildren to participate here in the county, just to give you an update on some of those things. So, it may have been a while since you've had an opportunity. Take a look at the website and see all of what we have going on. And I will tell you that in terms of the cleanliness of our parks, that's one of the things that the park director stays right on top of. Almost every single day, there's crews all throughout the weekend, working very diligently, policing up our parks and making sure that they're clean and sanitized so that you, as a taxpayer, your family and friends can enjoy. If you haven't had an opportunity lately, I want to just take this opportunity to encourage you to take a look at that. And again, thank you for your service, and thank you for coming out this morning. We hear you loud and clear.
And I do agree that the people that do clean up the parks, I personally know them, because like I said, I do
Yes, ma'am.
frequent the parks.
Yes, ma'am.
And they do try to do a good job.
They take pride in their work.
Okay, but it's still, Rockdale citizens need to take pride in our county, too.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you. Let's give her another round of applause. Okay, Ms. Samuels, come on up, Ms. Samuels.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Actually, the two people ahead of me were perfect, because the first gentleman, actually, the 45% was on the public website for Conyers County, the public website. So, that's where that number came from. The other part of that is, Mr. George did a breakdown of, of all of the taxes, because I, I don't understand what your CEO or CFO does. However, what's important is that, like you said, you, we don't operate in a vacuum. So, the decisions that you make about your millage, it affects us because then it becomes city taxes, Board of Education taxes, and your taxes. So, if everybody's acting in a, a single stream without some coordination, then all those collected taxes get dumped on us.
Yes, ma'am.
And we are the ones on the single payment, or the, or lost the job due to the pandemic, or we're on the fixed income with medication costs going up, with them saying, we gave you a raise in social security, but oh, by the way, Medicare costs went up. So, it was a wash. We are still on that same fixed income that we started out with. So, I don't understand all the economics of it. And I understand you all have to provide services. And I understand that your costs went up, just as our costs are going up. But just like we have to tighten up our belts and our budgets, like the lady said, you're going to have to take priorities. What's most important? What I love about this place is that you do good with the Sheriff Department, the Fire Department, the things that you're most responsible for. The other stuff is, what's the extras? What can you cut back? Because really, you are here to take care of us. And that's all I got to say, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Samuels. I would, Chief Mack, if you would walk over to Executive Director Lewis at this time, he's going to hand you one of his wonderful business cards. I thought he was going in his pocket while Ms. Samuels was talking. But give that to Ms. Samuels before she leave the property, please, so she can set up a time to talk with him, and he can educate her so that she don't receive misinformation from the wrong people, all right?
All right, thank you.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Samuels. Let's give Ms. Samuels another round of applause. Commissioners, I think it's going so far, so good. We're giving everybody an opportunity to speak. I'm going to call Chief Mack, Chief Kay, three more folks, and hopefully, we can move a little bit faster here. But I want to make sure we take the time and respect everybody. The next name is a Ms. Jean.
Jean Albert.
Jean Albert, Ms. Jean Albert, you're there, come on, come on up, Ms. Jean Albert. Ray Bethune, and Anthony, I think this is Compton.
This is Anthony Compton, I don't have a comment at this time, so I'll move back to my time.
Thank you, Mr. Compton, we appreciate you, and appreciate you coming out this morning. Hopefully, this has been informing and educating to you this morning to clear up some of the things that was concerning to you. And if you need to speak with any of us afterwards, feel free to see the chief and you can gain our information. But thank you so much, I'm going to put Mr. Compton over there. And I think this is Ms. Jean, how you doing? Ms. Jean, all right.
I'm doing okay.
All right.
I guess everybody is confused on the, on the breakdown, the 45% and all that.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand that, I do want to say hello to all our commissioners here. I know this is going to sound repetitive, but I have three minutes. How long do you expect us to stay here in Rockdale County with the tax rate climbing so steeply? My husband and I moved here in 2017 from Stockbridge, where we were totally exempt from the school tax. We were misled into believing the same existed here. We didn't do our homework, so that's our bad. My husband's battling throat cancer. All of our bills are going up. We have to order our drugs now from Canada because we can't afford them here. Our social security went up 5.9%, and like the last lady said, our Medicare went up more, so we're losing there. Inflation hovers around 10%. Our savings are rapidly becoming depleted. We always believed in supporting our community. The reason we moved here is because I volunteer at the hospital and I wanted to be closer. And I also volunteer at the Sheriff's Department, where they're having national, no, Sheriff's Night Out, National Night Out tonight. So, anyways, I already mentioned buying the drugs from Canada. Some months, we wonder how many people are struggling to pay for the utilities, put food on their table, and gas in their tanks. This budget is just not sustainable, and it's going to force a mass exodus. Even if you don't own your own home, these charges will be passed along and rent increases. According to the US News, and I won't go into all the schools, because that's already been... Anyways, I just want to say to end up, our taxes are draining us dry, and something has to end. We're about to enter a recession, and we just can't afford it. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Jean, thank you so much. Mr. Bethune, come on up.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You know, I didn't want to try to think of what I was going to say, so I'm just going to speak from the heart. I don't know if any of you all remember me.
I remember you, sir.
Every time I came, I always spoke about the less fortunate and the taxes going so high. I knew this day was coming, it's going to get worse. But when some peoples bought their homes, they bought what they could afford. I remember I went to the Board of Education meeting, the lady said she bought her house, paid $150,000 because that's what she could afford. She wasn't trying to live above her minimum, she bought what she could afford. If you're going to raise taxes because of, you say, the value going up, she didn't ask for the value of her house to go up. She didn't. She bought a house for $150,000, that's what she could afford. Increasing taxes is forcing her out of her house, which you've heard a lot of people spoke of. I don't know how you all are going to vote, but ever since I started coming here, I asked you all not to raise the taxes and stuff. Now I'm going to change gears real quick, because I'm a proud military man. Ever since day one in military, I was taught to lead by example. When you lead by example, you learn to listen to people. You learn to accept disagreement. Everybody's not going to agree on anything, even in my household. My son don't even agree with me on everything. But it's all about respect and giving each of us that respect. It's okay to disagree. But don't let it roll downhill on someone else. And I yield because I know we got a lot of other people want to speak.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your service, Mr. Bethune. All right. Okay, Chief, I've got three more names I'm going to call. Mr. Dan Burks. Mr. Larry Cox. And Ms. Sadie Foster. Dan Burks, Mr. Larry Cox, and Ms. Sadie Foster.
I'm Larry Cox, I'm going to meet with Burks who's outside, so I'm just going to stand over here.
So, we get Mr. Burks, if he's outside, we'll go ahead and get him. Mr. Burks.
Mr. Cox.
Now, we'll wait on Burks.
You're Sadie Foster, Sadie Foster.
Right, we'll wait on Cox and then Ms. Foster, after Mr. Burks. Bring, bring Mr. Burks on in.
Mr. Burks? Yes, thank you, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Burks, good morning.
Ms. Washington, Ms. Williams. Hello, and greetings. In 1993, my wife and I, we came to Rockdale County and to start our family. After a lot of research and that, we found Rockdale was the best schools and the best place to go. And it worked out beautifully. My daughter is a PhD chemist out of the Magnet Program. And I was really, I still am happy with Rockdale. And everything was good. But the taxes just keep going up. I got the house I'm in right now, I got in, in 2006, I've been in there 17 years. Started out at 352 a month, a year for the property taxes. They are now over $1,500. And I'm just not seeing a benefit for that. The schools are going down, and, you know, it's just, you know, more money and less service to me. I don't know, maybe other people in this county are receiving better services and that. And, you know, I could leave. I mean, I, I'm in a perfect situation just to sell and go. But I like my house, I like Rockdale, I like the people around me. I don't, I don't want to do that. I want to stick around and try to help the county and, you know, make things better. But my suggestion to help our problems is, we got to stop spending. The state, I worked for the state of Georgia, in the 90s, the state had, you know, had problems, had fiscal problems. They did a hiring freeze, and they made every department cut 5%. And we need to look at doing something like that. And we also need a forensic audit. We need to find out where our money's at, and what possibly went wrong, what we're doing right. And, you know, we just need to take a long, hard look at every, every department. And these taxes is just, you know, this hurting a lot of other people a lot more than me. Now, I want to get involved in some charity to help some of these people that may be losing their homes, and see if we can coordinate with churches or whatever to help these people pay their taxes. But, you know, a big part of that is just don't raise them. You know, there are a lot of services that we just don't need. People need to do a lot of stuff on their own. And, and this, all this we're talking about today does not include the debt bomb that's going to happen with that courthouse. That courthouse is going to be a, an expense that's going to go absolutely crazy. They think they can build that for 110, 150 million, and things going to be way over 200 million. And it's going to, it's going to hurt. And we need to take a long, hard look at it. Is that my three minutes?
Mr. Burks, thank you so much, we appreciate you and all that you do for the citizens here in Rockdale County, we heard you loud and clear. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Next speaker, please. Good morning, Ms. Sadie.
Good morning. Commissioner, board members, and neighbors. I'm Sadie Foster, and I am a resident of Rockdale County, and I am a senior citizen, living on a fixed income like all the other people that came up, the other young people that came up. Okay, I'd like to address the two topics. The increase in the county's millage rate, and the already approved increase of 11% in the local school board tax. Please don't increase the millage rate, we can't afford it. Everything from food to gas has increased. Okay. There are other counties, I'm going back to the school board tax, and I didn't realize that that was a separate, you know, entity. And I didn't realize that I could go
Yes, ma'am.
before the school board
Yes, ma'am.
to beg and plead to take care of us seniors. We can't afford it, it is pretty high. Okay, we have heard many times that Rockdale County care for their seniors. And we have been, it has been proven that you do. In fact, when the pandemic hit, you guys made sure that we had care packages to see us through, and we appreciate it. Okay, so, think about us, take care of us again during these hard times, because we're still hurting. And anything that you can do to help us will be appreciated. This whole pocketbook here is almost empty. Please, please, don't let it get really empty. But anyway, my time is almost up. And in closing, I ask that the Board of Commissioners give their above issues a huge consideration. And I thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you, Ms. Foster, thank you so much.
Don't forget us, this pocketbook here is...
Yes, ma'am, and it looks good on you, too. Give her a round of applause. All right, next speaker, please. Mr. Cox, come on up.
Good morning, everyone, good morning, Mr. Chairman. The senior citizen population of Rockdale County is roughly 15.7%. The poverty rate in Rockdale County is roughly 12.4%. When we just do some, just common sense thinking, and these seniors that are on fixed incomes, we sort of figure that the majority of those 15.7 are on their own poverty level. That's just, that's just simple mathematics. And when we first saw this in the newspaper, and it was proposed the rate, and it was at 45%, and then I noticed we had the revised. So, that means that 45% and that 20% mill was the original proposed rate that has been revised. So, it would be nice to see the revised percent with that... With that new mileage, is that gonna make it twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five? What's that percent gonna be? So it'd be nice to see that this evening so that people could do some better calculations. Because we're gonna throw some calculations out because those were the numbers I had at the time. And that is, the citizens of unincorporated Rockdale with a forty-five percent increase from the county and the eleven point something percent increase from the school board would be facing a fifty-eight percent property tax increase. And if you go to the city with what the city was gonna add, the city residents would be facing a sixty-five percent increase. I, and, Mr. Chairman, I did speak at the BOE meeting and tell them that what they were doing was taxing senior citizens out of homeownership and independent living. And that's what we are doing. And, and, and I have, through the last month or so, senior citizens have been calling me because I had a group called The Rockdale Voter. And they want something done. And you mentioned the state legislature. The Rockdale Voter is going to be working with the state legislature to introduce a true homestead exemption act that will cover all three entities. The Board of Commission, the Board of Education, and the City of Congress. Because these senior citizens, when talking to me, they feel that these three entities are the heartless three. Because we are looking at senior citizens, just as the senior who came up here in tears today. We have senior citizens in this county that are facing losing their homes. They're not wanting to downsize because they want a smaller home. They're gonna have to downsize because they can't afford the taxes. They can't afford to live in the home that they raised their children that they have been in Rockdale County in for thirty and forty years. I ask this commission to think long and hard. And I asked, we asked you to have a summit with these other two, which I refer to all of you as the heartless three. And get a heart and save the homes of these Rockdale citizens.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cox. And thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens here in Rockdale County. We've got a transition taking place, so we're gonna allow that to happen before we proceed forward. And Chief Mack, if you would, go ahead and announce outside. We've made some space, so some of those folks, if they like, they're welcome to come into the cool, taxpaying air conditioning and get, get some of their air and cool off on some of their own air. They paying for it, so they may as well take advantage of it instead of stay out there in that heat. Okay, all right. Next three will be Ms. Commissioner, you may have to help me with that one. That last name, I can't...
Ava, what's his name? T A N E R A I T O T.
I'm gonna give that to them and let them... And if you, if you had to, if you had your device on outside so you can hear, uh, if you would turn it off at this time, that way it wouldn't knock our system out since you're in, you're in live with us now. Thank you so much. I understand that you had to have something to listen to out there. So, Chief, I'm gonna call three. The first name was a, and I'm gonna hand you this too because I can't pronounce the last name that well. Susan Tan Trader. Here, here's Chief. Okay. Also, Mr. Tom Olsen. Mr. Olsen is here. He's in the audience. And a Ms. Elizabeth Howard. Elizabeth Howard. Since Mr. Olsen is here, let's go ahead and take Mr. Olsen. Come on up, Mr. Olsen.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I moved to, uh, Rockdale County in eighty-two. And we did a lot of research and found it was, uh, one of the gold star counties in the, in the, in the state. The school system was a A-plus system. Today, people are not wanting to move here because of different aspects. They want to move further out. The schools are now D-class. My daughter went to school for eight years and I'm still paying school taxes. I know that's not your bailiwick, but if you're not communicating with these other departments, shame on you. I, uh, I'm on a fixed income. My home taxes went up three years ago fifty percent. I live in a three-bedroom home and it's getting to be very expensive to live in this county. Uh, I live on Christian Circle and the, it's a racetrack. Police are never there. The thirty mile, thirty-five mile an hour speed limit. People are going fifty, sixty, even more. I used to drag race, so I know how fast somebody's going. It's, it's a shame that we have not been taken care of as senior citizens. You know, our, our, we can't, we can't raise our income like you can, you know, vote a, vote a increase in salary. Or if people are working, they can, they can ask their employer for a, for a raise or get a different job. I'm eighty years old. I'm not about to go out and get and start working. I can hardly get around the house. So I don't know what else to say to you other than you're not paying attention to what's happening around us. This county used to be a great, great county. And throwing money at it doesn't fix it. Look at California. Look at New York. That's what's happened there. I don't, you know, I don't know, I don't know what to say other than that, and I thank you for hearing me.
Mr. Olsen, thank you for coming out and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens here in Rockdale County. We heard you loud and clear. Thank you so much. All right. All right. Ms. Elizabeth Howard. Is there Ms. Elizabeth Howard? I'm gonna hand you that one, Chief. That's Ms. Howard's card. And we have, um, an Al Surphys, a Kathleen McNamara, McNamara, Kathleen Ma- McNam- McNamara, uh, and Ms. Cynthia Hobbs. Okay, once again, there's, uh, Kathleen McNamara, Al Surphys, and Ms. Cynthia Hobbs. Let's, let's call those out there, Chief, and see that we have. I do see Ms. Mildred Johnson. I'm gonna ask Ms. Johnson to come on up. She's already in the audience and that can kind of keep our time going while Ms. Johnson... Come on up, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, or morning, I mean. Seems like evening. It's been a while since I've spoken, you know, here. Unfortunately, I have to come back and speak again. I, too, am a senior citizen on a fixed income in Rockdale County, have been here since two thousand and one when the county, you know, was in a different direction. It seems like lately, all we do is increase taxes and, here in the county, and increase the employment in the county. I just saw that you were doing another employment, um, whatever you call it, a job fair, where you were trying to hire more people. It seems to me that more people are not the answer. Uh, it looks to me like you need to be cutting some budget here and, and figuring out what you need to do to decrease your spending. You're taxing people out of their homes. You really are. My neighbor across the street just moved because of the situation. And you're probably gonna find a lot more people doing that, too. I mean, it's unreasonable. So, think about it. You, we can't vote ourselves an average seventeen percent tax increase like you guys just did, you know, with, uh, the county employees. We can't do that. So, we're the ones paying the bills. And y'all need to be a little more conservative with your money and start looking at how you can cut some taxes, cut some spending, and get rid of some of these positions that looks to me like you got too many chiefs and not enough Indians, maybe. Or maybe you do have enough of all and you just need to decide what is really important and what's not. And this, uh, somebody else mentioned this, and I will, too. This increase in taxes is just a portion of what's gonna hit us later because you guys pushed through a facilities authority and now you want to build a hundred and ten million dollar plus courthouse complex in Old Town, which we voted down in two thousand and eighteen. But you got around that with a facilities authority. So when you let your bonds for a hundred and ten million, that's gonna go to the taxpayers also on their property taxes to pay. So this is just a drop in the bucket as to what that's gonna be as well. Because there's no income coming in that's gonna pay for that facility. So think about it. But we'll be up here to talk about that facility again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. No answer, no response. Okay. All right. All right. The next one I have is a Ms. Monique Wumble. Is Chief Mack, is there anyone else standing on the outside? Okay. Ms. Wumble, good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Well...
I'm here today to speak, to be heard. Um, I'm a mother of four and I just opened up my property tax envelope and I noticed that it was ridiculously high. I can't afford it. I'm gonna have to find another job just to afford it. And I'm speaking on behalf of Rockdale citizens to please don't raise the taxes. That's pretty much all I want to say. And this is my first time actually here. I always watch you over everything. But I just wanna come here to say, think about it. Uh, I might have to get a second job and I can't afford it. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wumble. Thank you for coming out this morning. And we appreciate, um, your comments and we definitely hear you loud and clear.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. So at this, at this time, Chief Mack, Chief Cave, I'm going to go back through the list of non-responders. Uh, Chief Mack, you said there's nobody standing outside. There's nobody standing outside? Okay. Okay. All right. Well, stay with me here. Here's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna call these names out. I'm gonna give you each card of the name that I call. Then I'm gonna, for all practical purposes, I want you to call it out anyway, out, outside. Uh, Mr. Charles Herman, Mr. David Anderson, Mr. Donald Parker, Spencer Hay, Velma Gauss, Evan McWilliams, Susan Tannerator, Elizabeth Howard, Cynthia Hobbs, and Ms. Kathleen McNamara. Chief Mack, if you would, call those outside. Uh, just, I don't care if you're just calling them out to the, to the sun and the clouds. Just call out their names anyway for me, please. Let the dogwood tree hear. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna yield right here. So I need you to call them out because I'm gonna hold tight until you have called each name. Chief Mack? Okay.
They can hear you, but we're gonna do it one more time.
Thank you so much. And I'm gonna just, we're just gonna yield for a second. Uh, I saw a couple of our directors bobbing for apples and it's not even October yet. So I just thought I'd say that. I didn't want to call out their names on live television. Some of this stuff is so repetitive. It kind of puts people into, uh, church mode and they get the nod, and so I want everybody to stay alert. Commissioner Washington waved. I want to thank you all for patiently allowing us to go through the process to afford each of our citizens an opportunity to be heard this morning. I think that every citizen has a right to come up and have their say and be able to express where they stand. I will also point out the fact that these are some very difficult times we're living in and inflation is extremely high and these gas prices are out the roof. So, uh, a lot of lessons learned. I know the executive team have been taking notes this morning. Uh, one of the running themes that I continue to hear this morning is communication and how we disseminate information through our website and our public relations, um, department and how we interact with our local media. I think that going forward, there's a lot to be said about how information gets out and, and what, and the right kind of information getting out, I think is very important. But that's okay. Leadership is ownership. And, uh, we're gonna be, just like the military veteran said, I totally agree with Mr. Bethune that you have to lead by example. And, uh, I'm old school, so I believe in the comment card. I liked them when they had them at the restaurants. I think people ought to have an opportunity to be able to say what they don't like and what they do like. Management ought not get upset or tight-jawed about it. You gotta have thick skin to be in this business. It's just part of it. So, Chief Cave, are we clear?
Yes, sir. We called eleven names outside and gave everyone an opportunity. There are still citizens outside, but all eleven were not, um, present.
Okay. And one other question, uh, between you and Chief Mack. Those citizens who are outside, does not any of them want to come? We're about to go into board comment. I think it would be a benefit if they, if those that want to hear the board comments from Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams. You want to announce, Chief, that we're gonna go into board comment and if they'd like to come in?
Okay.
Please, we want to give them an opportunity. They may be enjoying the gathering on the steps than, than coming in. Who knows? We'll, we'll see. Mr. Olsen, I'm gonna, I won't talk to you from the gallery. I'm gonna invite you back up to the podium, if you would. I'd just like to try to run the meeting with a little bit of order to the best of my ability. Since you raised your hand, I respect and acknowledge you. Yes, sir, Mr. Olsen.
Um, just a question. Was it purposely held in this building where there's no, not really a lot of room for a lot of people to participate?
So let me answer that for you. On a weekly basis, we have our Board of Commissioners meeting here. Uh, occasionally, since I've been serving, we do get information that there's gonna be a relatively large crowd. The other thing that is factored in that is the availability of the auditorium. This morning, the auditorium, which is a larger venue, was already booked out to another entity and, um, had already reserved that space. And they had a proceeding going on over there, so we were not able to utilize that. The other factor that's put into place is safety. In fact, I probably should have said that first. Uh, you understand that safety comes first. You understand that safety comes first. We have to make sure the safety of the citizens, as well as the staff and the Board of Commissioners, is a top priority.
Sure.
As you see, I try my best to run a meeting of order and allow everybody to be able to be heard with respect and discipline and order. It may not be the same situation the next time. We may be able to be in the larger space if the space is available.
If it was, you would, you would have...
If it was available, yes, sir. Because, in fact, thank you, Mr. Olson, we have used that space in the past. We have, because it has been available, it has been open. But we respect those people who have already previously reserved that space so that we can be...
There was just a lot...
To honor, honor there.
A lot of grumbling outside.
Yes, sir. Well, I think that some of the information that went out kind of created a little bit of that as well. I also feel like that our CFO have done a fantastic job this morning. He's going to present again this evening, and then we have one additional day. The folks who really want to get the facts from the Board of Commissioners and what we're doing will contact us, they'll pay attention and get the facts. Those people who want to promote against us negatively about what we're doing, or even call us heartless, that, that group of people will, will always exist.
Oh, yeah.
And as I stated a moment ago, that's part of the business that we're in. You, you, this is not for everybody to sit in these seats. You've got to have thick skin to do this job, and if you're weak and emotional, you're in the wrong spot. But I certainly do appreciate you, and, and thank you for coming up.
Ms. Nesbit, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. All right. Now, we're going to go into, one more hand. Yes, sir. Come on up, sir. I want to make sure that I give an opportunity to hear from you. We're going, we're going to go outside ourselves and hear everybody that wants to talk this morning. Come on up. So tell us who you are.
Melvin Mayhall.
Melvin?
Mayhall.
Mayhall. Mr. Mayhall, good morning.
Good morning. I just wondered, why are school taxes in Henry County being exempt? There's no school tax in Henry County for seniors. Why is not, Rockdale County can't take a look at that and do that here?
Well, let me tell you, that's an excellent question for the Rockdale County Board of Education. What's happening in Henry, DeKalb, Walton, Newton, and all of the surrounding counties, your Chairman Nesbit has absolutely no control and no influence on. However, you, as a taxpayer, can go over to the Board of Education here in Rockdale County and ask them that very same question. That's where you get the answer. I have, I cannot answer that question at all, sir.
Okay. Well, I've been in county for forty-two years.
Yes, sir.
And there's a senior citizen couple that are having medical problems right down the street from me. I'm helping them out. But they're not going to be able to stay in at home, like everybody else is saying, if you raise taxes on them. I mean, they're already strapped and with medical bills, and so we just need to take that in consideration for everybody.
Well, let me say thank you for being generous and kind and helping your neighbor. I also want you to take this back to your neighbors when you go back home. Let them know that several people came out this morning, and they spoke to the Board of Commissioners, and the Commissioners heard each and every one of them. Let them know that a decision has not been made yet, and there's still time for the citizens to continue to send us emails, phone calls, text messages. Still time for them to come out to meetings. Let your neighbors that you're looking out for, let them know that you came up and you, you voiced your opinion as well. Please remind them that a decision, a vote, will not be made until August the sixteenth. So I believe that most of the people in our county can hear us loud and clear, and that we're going to hear from everybody. So a decision has not been made.
I understand.
We certainly want to hear the voices of all of our citizens. And I want to thank you again for looking out for your neighbor and being the man that you are, and I certainly do appreciate you coming out this morning.
Thank you for hearing.
Thank you so much. Yes. Yes, ma'am? Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Rosie Cecil. I am a county resident.
Yes, Ms. Cecil.
And a voter.
Yes, ma'am.
I've come before here once before.
Yes, ma'am.
Walked away not feeling good about coming before you. But let me say today, senior citizen, like so many others, this is, what, one of the smallest counties in the state of Georgia.
Yes, ma'am.
What's happening, whether you say, well, we need to grow, we understand growth, but exorbitant growth for things that citizens don't want makes no sense. We all have votes. We all need to exercise that. I'm going to tell you, I sent a text message with attachments to every Rockdale citizen in my phone. They will be coming out. I've already seen some. I'll be back here again. I may speak again. But this makes no sense. Do measured growth. You're not the only ones who are taxing us. Federal government also is in our pocketbooks. So when you're stacking taxes on top of taxes on top of taxes, don't be surprised. You're right. Citizens will have to relocate. And unfortunately, because of investment money all over this country, they are going to have to relocate somewhere where they may not want to be. We moved here because this is a safe, small county. We expect services, just like anybody else does anywhere else. We expect to be able to live and live in peace. We don't cause problems. Most citizens are not your problems. But open up those homes. You may get elements you don't want in this county. We see crime is rampant all over this country, and it's not being done by citizens, not, not senior citizens. And as far as seats in here, we realize this space is limited. Open the space up for citizens. I appreciate all of you county workers and things like that, but you're working for the county. We're the ones who are funding the county. Make these seats available to people who want to come in and hear, and to be educated, and also to express their concerns. This is not your show. This is our show. We are organizing every day. We're paying attention to what you're doing. The days of us just going and voting are about over. We want to see results. No threats, no aspersions. I'm just expressing my heart, because I am a voter. Been voting since I was eighteen years old and will always vote. And I'm educating my friends, I'm educating my family, and it's based on what we get from you. You need to be more transparent. Don't just tell us, okay, well, if you want to know what's going on, show up, or, or do this, that, or the other. We need to know exactly what's going on as citizens. And I promise you, people are starting to pay attention more and more every day. Expect to see me again with more of my friends and neighbors and everybody else, but thank you so much for your time. Have a great day.
Ms. Cecil, thank you so much. Thank you. Now, right before Commissioners, I go into board comment, is there any other citizen that want to have a voice or say they want to come on up? And make sure you express yourself and tell us where you stand. Any citizen at this time? In just a moment, I'm going to go to board comment and yield to Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams, but I want to make sure that if there's anybody else that want to speak, have the opportunity to speak at this time. Okay. All right. We're moving into board comment. Commissioner Washington, it's on you.
So, first of all, I really appreciate everybody coming out and giving their thoughts on where we are or where, where we advertise we would be with the milage rate. Most of you all know that this is hard. This is, this is hard work that we're doing. On one hand, people don't want their, their taxes to go up, but on the other hand, they're upset because they have, the response time when the sheriffs are called is six minutes. All of that is, you know, if you don't have the staff to do things, then you can't get the services. If we're losing people, then you, you can't get the services. If we don't have benefits for my, for our employees, then we don't have the employees to do things. So it's, it's all, it's all tied in. It's all together. I do realize fixed incomes, I lived, I grew up with my great-grandmother and my grandmother and my grandfather, and all of them were retired. My, my grandmother was born in nineteen oh one, and by the time we moved in, or we had a, a family compound, but by the time we moved down there, she was seventy-something years old, so she'd been retired for a while, and I watched her stretch her budget with her, her brother and sisters. I watched that. I watched my, my, my grandmother move from Chicago to Georgia when she was, when she retired. And I remember her talking about how hard it was to maintain her household when, after she retired, because her income only went up, because they only got cost of living increases, and she retired from the federal government. So we understand, we get it. We, we're here, we're listening, we hear you, we hear you. But we also have the responsibility to run this county in a, a manner which keeps our credit rating the way it is, that keeps our, that provides services at a level that you all are expecting. And, and I encourage everybody that was here today, please, next week, we start our budget hearings. Every one of the departments, most of the departments will be presenting their budgets to us. I challenge you, I want you, please, look at last year's budget, the proposed budget for this year, and make, make suggestions to me as to where we can cut it, because I, I said it last year, when we approve a budget, that's, we, we can't officially set a milage rate, but that's kind of an indication on where the milage rate will be next year, because we're, we're saying that this is the amount that we anticipate. The same way, in the same vein that people are saying they may not want the courthouse, I had twenty texts yesterday from people telling me that we need to make sure that we had, have money, that we're looking to budget for this new courthouse. So, you know, we have to make hard decisions, and I'm glad that we have two weeks to be able to listen to everybody's concerns and come up with something that balances, and that's what it's all about. It's about balance. Balances the needs of the taxpayer with the needs of operations of this government, and that's what I will be doing for the next two weeks.
Commissioner Williams?
So she, Commissioner Washington covered a lot of my sentiments. That was, those were good comments. I do also appreciate the citizens who came out today. I think it's, I think that's part of a democracy and part of what you have elected us to do is to listen to what you have to say. I did want to just clarify a couple of things. A forensic audit was mentioned a couple times. We actually did have an, a, a brand-new independent auditor come in and look at our finances. They determined that there was not an issue, and there was no need to move further. So, that, that was a company that had never dealt with our finances before, and, and verified that we were in good shape, that everything was okay. There were things we could improve on, and Director Lewis is working with us to get those improvements made. But there was no indication of any misuse of any of, any of the county funds. Secondly, as far as the school board, there will be on the ballot this year in November, an opportunity to vote for not a complete hundred percent exemption for seniors from the school board tax, but for a, what they're, what they're proposing is, instead of a, they're, they're raising the exemption amount that you, so that it lowers the amount that you will pay school taxes. Did I make myself clear? Okay. That will be on the ballot in November. So you will want to make sure that you get your friends out and to vote for that lowering of the tax, school tax for senior citizens. I think those are all of my comments. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Executive Director Relidge, I think that we're down to the close of this particular milage rate hearing. This is number one. We've got two. You want to give us a little update about where we go from here?
Yes, I do. So as far as it relates today, after we adjourn this meeting, we'll go into our regular work session. And then tonight at six PM, we'll have another milage rate public hearing. And then on next Tuesday, August the ninth, we will start with a milage rate public hearing and then go into our voting session. And then the following Tuesday, which would be Tuesday, August sixteenth at six PM, we will have another milage rate public hearing, and then we will go into the work session. So on Tuesday, August twenty-third, we'll have our regular voting session. I want to add one more thing, that the Board of Commissioners is supposed to set the milage rate on Tuesday, August the sixteenth, at a called meeting. So they do have some time to think about this before the decision is made. I wanted to point out one more thing, Mr. Chairman, if that's all right. This PowerPoint presentation that Director Lewis did this morning, we are going to have it placed out on our website, so that way people can view it with all of the information that has been provided by finance. So that will be made available sometime before the, the hearing tonight.
Okay. Very good. Very good. Well, we certainly do appreciate all of the updates and for those dates to be taken into consideration. What we're going to do, we'll be transitioning from this milage rate hearing to our regular Board of Commissioners meeting here in just a second. We're going to take a five-minute recess after we do that. So at this time, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Five-minute recess. So at this time, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Five minutes recess. Uh, Chief Kay, would you check to see if there's anyone else outside that want to come in for this start? And I don't know whether we have a deputy or not. Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we assembled here. It is Tuesday, August the second, twenty twenty two, and we're. Here at the Assembly Hall at nine oh one Main Street. We're beginning to call our work session to order. And this morning, we have a special presentation from the Executive Director, Mr. Kevin Hannah. He's the President and C E O of the Conyers Rockdale Economic Development Council. He's going to come up at this time and make a presentation to the B L C. All right, Mr. Hannah, come on up.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, I I have less of a presentation and more of a request to be made of the of the board this morning. Um, we are looking to administer a study for Irish Irish Iris Drive Corridor. Um, this corridor essentially um reaches from Sigmund Road on the west to Old Salem um to the east. As it as it happens, a study by the same firm, the collaborative firm, has already been done. Um, for the stretch of um Rockdale, Conyers Rockdale County. From Sigmund Road along Old Covington, basically on the other side, on the north side of I twenty. From Sigmund Road to Salem Road. So this particular um portion of that stretch will kind of complete the loop, if you will. The purpose of the study, the Iris Drive Corridor Study, is to help us gather information um about. What's there now, what it makes sense to put there later, when to do it, how to finance it. We've had, we at the Conyers Rockdale Economic Development Council, and maybe I'm sure you all too, have had folks come and talk to us. Some complaining, some encouraging, um, some just for information about what they think ought to be there and what they think ought not be there. Uh, there was some talk some while ago, this may have been before my time, but I've heard about it kind of in the aftermath. About the possibility of a liquor store or a liquor store type entity being placed on Iris Drive. There was a lot of um, a lot of folks came out against that idea for for good reason. Um, and that kind of highlights the the need for a study, something that tells us this is what the community desires along that corridor. Um, this doesn't fit. Um, all that could be taken and used to um promote the corridor, but even more importantly. Used to um. Get developers interested in the corridor once we know, once you all help us to define. What makes most sense for that particular quarter. Um, we at at Cretezy have gone through a process to choose a um a consultant, the collaborative fund, as I as as collaborative firm. As I said, um, they've already done um more than half of that loop. Um, so it makes sense to have them complete the loop um with the Iris Drive Corridor. Essentially, that's that's our, it's our request of you. Uh, the the cost is seventy thousand dollars, I think, or up to seventy thousand, thereabouts. Uh, that's our request of you all to um to approve that that corridor study. To help us better understand how best to develop the Iris Drive Corridor.
So some of Iris Drive is in the city, right? Within the city limits?
Yes.
And so is the city contributing to this also?
Uh, not to my knowledge, no.
So we don't really have any jurisdiction over what happens in the city limits?
No.
No, but.
So I'm going to yield that. Commissioner Williams, any more comments or questions?
No, I'm just mulling things through in my head.
Well, go to Commissioner Washington.
Thank you for this. And let me, so it's our um. Hope, Dr. Williams, that once we do the Iris Drive Corridor Study, we would present it to the city and the county. And that would be some, that's why I want, well, we were hoping that Cretezy would do the um the study. Um, so that we can can present it to the city and the county and we can have a collective vision. On what that corridor would look like, the type of um development that we would like to occur. The density of it, the type of, if if it's going to be um mixed use, what kind of mixed use? Just to come up with a whole total vision and then it would be our um. Our hope that both the city and the county would would um. I guess, adopt the 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 vision that was put forth by Cretezy. Um, no, they don't, we we don't have any jurisdiction over what they do, but they are a a contributor to this and. Part of the um, the process is going to be to get input from the elected officials in. The city and the county and the the um, the people that are affected on Iris Drive now and the community at large. So that's one of the the reasons for doing the study.
Yeah, I get the reason for doing the study. I um. Especially there, I I've been paying attention to that corridor as I've come through town and um. From the interstate down to a certain point, there's a lot of vacant space. But then once you, once you get closer to the city, then it's pretty well.
Developed.
Complete, full, right?
Well, um, not necessar, there are some things there, but then you have things like the folks building and. The um, the the building across the street from uh. The folks, but it's down the street.
That houses right there.
Um, I actually kind of um. Got this idea from looking at another city, it was the cities um concept where they actually. Came up with a a plan for one of their major thoroughfares, and that's how they went and and got the developers to come and and. Develop their vision. So it's, there are things that can be improved on that thoroughfare also.
Oh, I agree. Yeah. It's kind of haphazard looking.
She said it.
No, but that that's a great description and that's.
Yeah.
Haphazardness is um a developer's worst nightmare. They want order and consistency. And hopefully the study will go a long way towards getting us there.
All right, any other comments or questions for Mr. Hannah?
Well, while you're here, could you give everybody a kind of a brief overview of what we're doing with workforce development? That was on the agenda also.
Uh, sure, uh, from a couple of different standpoints. First of all, as you know, as the chairperson of the Cretezy Board, um, the Board of Education or this. Rockdale County Public School System and um Cretezy. Through funding provided by the county, have decided to um fund a full-time position. At both Cretezy and Rockdale County Schools. The person will actually have an office at the uh, at the Board of Education and one in our offices at Cretezy. Um, that person will be dedicated full-time to workforce development. Generally speaking, that person will be, will work with me and with the school system, with the county, with the city, with the chamber, to first of all, identify the needs, workforce development needs of area companies, large and small, I might add. And then work with those entities that are charged with the responsibility of creating what I call product. Students, graduates, folks who are switching jobs, folks who are looking for jobs, a well-trained labor workforce to fill the jobs that are needed by Rockdale County corporations. Towards that end, our first round of interviews took place a couple of weeks ago. Dr. Oats and I interviewed some more folks this past week. We expect to make a recommendation for a person on October, I want to say the 12th, whenever the next Cretezy Board meeting is. That morning, we will, it's the 11th. That morning, we will make a recommendation at the Cretezy Board meeting. On that evening, Dr. Oats will make the same recommendation to his board for that person. So we should have that person onboard by the end of the month of August. That's one big thing. The second thing I want to mention is that before I got here, my predecessor, Marty Jones, used to hold HR roundtables, Human Resource Roundtables. Because of COVID, that all got 86ed. We're going to restart those starting next week on August 12th, I think it is. I'm sorry, the 10th, thank you. On August 10th, we're going to restart those. We've sent out invitations, we've gotten dozens of responses of HR folks who will like, who will, who intend to attend. The meetings will be, well, this meeting will be held at RCA, Rockdale Career Academy. At the end of the meeting, those HR folks will be given the opportunity to go on a tour of RCA. All that is intentional. We want them to see what's out there at RCA, the great programs, the big pathways, great pathways that they have out there. And also to give them an idea of what's not there. I mean, it may be that there are some skillsets, some types of, some, some, some job skills that a good number of them are seeking that we aren't, at least right now, at RCA providing. We're hopeful that between those two first steps, hiring somebody and getting re-engaged with area employers, that we can kind of kick off a Rockdale-specific, I might add, Rockdale-specific workforce development initiative.
So that tour, will that include Georgia Piedmont Technical College that's located there also?
On the campus, yes.
Yeah.
And thank you for bringing that up, because a lot of folks don't know that Georgia Piedmont Technical College has a campus on the Rockdale Career Academy grounds. So yes, it will include that as well.
Great.
All right, Commissioner Washington?
Just, I just want to say that we're not trying with workforce development to impede on anybody else's work. We know that the ARC is doing, has their workforce development program and that they're doing a great job with what they're doing with the skillset that they're trying to, to enhance. We just want to start a program that looks specifically at this county and gets our, bridges the gaps between the education needed and, and the labor needed so that we can have a thriving Rockdale County workforce development. Also, this is the first time that, that the school board has contributed to Cretezy, and we've figured out how to make a contribution worthwhile to them. And so I'm very, very excited about this opportunity to have this workforce development person onboard and ready to work. And most, we, we did have a meeting with Georgia Piedmont Technical College on Friday. They're very excited about this opportunity. I think we're getting ready to, to do some things that aren't common but needed.
Yeah. In fact, the GPTC leadership will be at that meeting at RCA next week.
Mr. Hannah, thank you so much. Thank you for coming out. And we encourage you to keep us posted as you continue to move forward with work over at the Conyers Rockdale Economic Development Council.
Can I make one more?
Yes, you may.
Relative to the Rockdale County Public School System, we are working very closely with Rockdale County Public School System. They, if they didn't before, they absolutely do now, recognize the synergistic relationship between us. They understand that to the extent that we can get companies who are already here to expand, to get companies who are not here to come here, that expands the tax base. And to the extent the tax base is expanded, the Rockdale County Public School System, all of us have more resources to get done, the kinds of stuff that we'd like to get done. So with that, thank you for having me here, and I look forward to the next time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
So Director Rutledge, we're going to move now into Agenda Review.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The first item that we have is be under unfinished business. It would be Item 319. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning 2660 Old Salem Road southeast from R1 to CRS to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. The last board meeting, this item was deferred, the second reading was deferred. So you will take it up again as a second reading next Tuesday.
And, and while we're on that one, I just want to yield to Chief Cave, I know there was some work to take place between the Chief's Office and the Planning and Development Director Johnson's Office so that we can educate and inform the public about some of the concerns regarding this particular project. Chief Cave, you expound on that a little bit?
Yes, sir, and Director Johnson has provided the additional information. Essentially, the Planning Department has done a review of all citizen concerns relating to this particular zoning matter and provided the staff response to all of those citizen concerns. And Director Johnson has provided that information over the weekend, and I subsequently have sent it to all of the commissioners. I've spoken with Commissioner Williams and, and the Chairman in reference to it. And I believe Commissioner Washington is still reviewing the document. But yes, I believe all of the concerns have been addressed. But if the Board has any further questions, we're certainly happy to have Director Johnson step up and, and address those.
Well, I'd say, first of all, thank you, because you're right. I've seen multiple emails. And Director Johnson, you've done a fantastic job, you and your staff responding to those inquiries about economic development and the particular things surrounding that project on the Old Salem Road. One of the things I think would really help us, particularly at this upcoming meeting, sometimes citizens for various different reasons don't engage or indulge, or perhaps don't know where to find information. So I think it would be in our best interest to have something upfront, even as we prepare to render a decision, to go ahead and publicly announce those concerns. There was a series of concerns which have already been addressed, but I think we need to talk about them publicly at the podium so that we, so people can hear that we've checked off this, we've checked off that, and we've given relative information so they will understand. Whereas we've communicated internally, that's fine. But let's externally make sure that, because what we don't want to happen is for the Board to render a vote or a decision, and yet the citizens still didn't know the answers to some of those questions publicly. And that's, that was one of the biggest things. In fact, if, I, I do recall Commissioner Washington pointing that out. That was a lot of the reason why we deferred this, so we could go back, answer those questions and those concerns, and then be able to bring them to the citizens. So we've done that. We've done our homework. So let's tell them what our findings are, so people will understand what they are and why we're moving in whatever direction that is decided on, on the day of the vote. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
But, well, I love the, the way it was justified. It was everything, it was the justification of why this should go forward, and every concern was addressed. And, and we got all of the data on the sewer system, the water flow, the school system, the impact that it's going to have on the school system. And I just would like to be able to present that, those same things consistently to the Planning Commission, so that when they're making a decision, they know that we have taken all of those things into consideration. And you've given your justification based off of the data that we have. And that way, they can make a better decision, because a lot of things that were presented to them and to us weren't not, were not true at all when we went back and actually dug in and did the research. So I would just like suggest, to suggest, that we do this just about for every project so that the citizens have all the data that we have and you have when you're making these decisions. So maybe it won't be this hard going forward.
Well, Commissioner Washington, let me, I'll tell you, you will delight yourself in knowing that the leadership of Director Johnson and Chief Cave have collaborated in that regard going forward, because we talked about using that same model and template going forward with, with, with all of our developments so that we don't, as you stated, have to answer those questions over and over and over. And then in, in respect of the Planning Commission, which is our citizens who serves as a filter or buffer before it gets to the actual Board, it's so important that that group of citizens are educated and informed, and they have the data. Time doesn't allot for them. When they come to their meetings, they need to have all of the data and the information privy to them at their disposal so they can make a, a real conscious, clear decision. So I, I, I gotta give hats off and give credit where credit is due. Director Johnson, thank you so much. Chief Cave, thank you for working with him. And going forward, as you said, as you heard the Commissioner say, not just on this project, but all of the projects to go forward, because it is quite confusing. And then the problem becomes when we allow the narrative to be left to someone who does not have the data. These projects are data-driven, and we must have the data to back up and substantiate what we're talking about. And that clears up, that really clears up a lot of the confusion right there. So Commissioner, I, I, I thank you so much for your leadership. I, I will tell you, I'm delighted, and I'm sure you, knowing that going forward, not just on this project, that we're, we're, we're moving in the right direction. So Chief Cave, thank you. Thank you, Director Johnson, and certainly Commissioner Washington. Thank you for us being able to pump the brakes, so to speak, and defer this. And now we're at a point where we can move forward with the right information. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's no items right now on the consent agenda. So we will go down to the next item, which is Item 331. This is a transmittal resolution for the capital improvements element for the 2022 annual update. As part of the requirements from the state of Georgia, we have to hold a brief public hearing on the capital improvements update. And that will be held next Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. as part of the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. And the backup information is also available.
And you know, Executive Director Rutledge, this couldn't be more timely than right now. We do this annual update with the Atlanta Regional Commission each and every year. A lot of the citizens don't know that Rockdale County is one of the 11 counties that make up the Atlanta metropolitan area. We are part of the Atlanta Region Commission. We are required to do this, and just to the very subject we talked about in terms of data and information, ARC does a, that's what they are. They are a data-driven organization to provide to all of the 11 metro counties that make up metro Atlanta, information, whether it's from people riding bicycles or how much water, money people spending, a number of folks living in those different areas and regions, dealing with transportation, and a multiplicity of projects that span across all the way from Rockdale County to Cherokee County in the northern section of metro Atlanta. So it is a plus that we're engaged and we are part of ARC, because to the Commissioner's point, this is the kind of data and information as we're thinking about planning forward and considering what our citizens constantly talk to us about when there's change taking place. You got to make sure we're not just doing something or adding something. We have to make sure that's consistent with the needs and the desires of our citizens, but that it makes sense and that we're thinking forward in Rockdale County, not just for today. This is, this is very good. So this one is coming up here pretty soon.
Yes, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, soon enough.
All right, so, okay, oh, sorry, did, did you have something else? We good? All right, thank you. Item 332 is the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, also known as, as the SAMSA. And that's with Juvenile Court for the Family Treatment Court Enhancement Project Grant in the amount of $409,375. The term is October 1st, 2022 through September 30th, 2023. I just want to point out that also next Tuesday, the Juvenile Court will be giving a brief presentation on this particular grant as well.
Very good. All right, next item?
Item 333 is with the Atlanta Regional Commission for the Parks and Recreation Department, the Senior Services Division, for the Home and Community-Based Services Grant in the amount of $474,874.93. The term is July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023.
I, I do have to point out that Director Redman and Deputy Director Wilson, Deputy Director Wilson, who's here this morning on behalf of Parks and Recreation, I pointed out early in the other meeting that of the wonderful things that are happening through Parks and Recreation, and then all of the things that we're doing for our local seniors. Here's yet another grant opportunity, Commissioners, that leaks our seniors along with Parks and Recreation. And there are so many of them, this is another point to be proud of. So just want to put that out there, that we're certainly keeping our seniors in mind here in Rockdale County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 334 is with the Friends of Disabled Adults and Children through the Parks and Recreation Department, Senior Services Division. This is the Memorandum of Understanding to Provide Space to Assist the Community with Access to Free or Low-Cost Durable Medical Equipment. It's at no cost for one year with option to renew four additional 12-month periods.
Have we had that contract before?
Hello, how are you? I'm not 100% sure, but I can find that information out for you.
And, and what I will say, Commissioner Williams, I'm not sure it was this particular contract, but you are correct. We've, our senior services have been in a position where we've been given walkers, canes, crutches. They provided this type of assistance for those who've been disabled. In fact, Deputy Director Morgan has a, a, a storage closet, should I say, with several assistant-needed-type items. So I'm not sure this particular grant, we've done those services before for our citizens, who, someone who may have needed a walker or, or a set of crutches or some type of assistance to help them be mobile and agile, we provide that to the citizens here in the county. So, but thank you, Deputy Director.
Thank you.
I just didn't recognize that acronym.
Acronym, yeah, and they change all the time.
That's true.
Yeah.
Okay, Item 335 is with Jeremiah Y. Namkung Jr. This is for the Parks and Recreation Department. It's an instructor for the Tennis Coaching for Adults and Youth at Johnson Park Recreation Center and the Rockdale Tennis Center. Estimated revenue is $12,000 with a 70/30 split through December 31st, 2022, with option to renew two additional 12-month periods. Item 336 is with Lawn Creations LLC for the Water Resources Department. This is for lawn maintenance, a water treatment plant, and the tank sites in the amount of $35,000, $35,880 annually. It's one year with option to renew two additional one-year periods. Item 337 is with Pratt Recycling Incorporated for the General Services Department. This is for the dumpster services for county facilities. Its unit price per building estimated yearly cost in the amount of $199,730.40. It's one year with option to renew four additional one-year periods. Item 338 is with Pitney Bowes Global Financial Services for the General Services Department. This is the lease agreement for the mail machine services. It's estate contract pricing at $2,382.33 per quarter, and it's a 48-month lease. Item 339 is with Rockdale Plaza LLC through the Item three thirty-nine is with Rockdale Plaza LLC through the General Services Department. This is the lease for the stormwater management and planning and development located at eleven seventeen and eleven nineteen West Avenue Southwest Conyers in the amount of four thousand six hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents per month. The stormwater has a fifty-five percent and planning and development has forty-five percent. This is three years with three one-year renewal options and submitted for ratification. Item three forty is with Premier Elevator Company through the General Services Department. This is preventative maintenance agreement for six elevators and two lifts at various county locations. It's change order number one to contract twenty nineteen dash thirty-five. The pricing is a price increase for the fuel cost additional thirty-four dollars and sixty-two cents per month and an eight-dollar fuel surcharge, one thousand three hundred twenty-three dollars and sixty-two cents monthly, and it's for one year. Item three thirty, three forty-one is with Standard Office Systems through the Technology Services Department. This is for the lease and maintenance contract. It's change order number eleven to contract twenty eighteen dash seventy-seven to add copier for the District Attorney's Office in the amount of six thousand one hundred seventy-four dollars for the lease and is fourteen months, and the maintenance is one thousand two hundred sixty dollars for fourteen months. Item three forty-two is with Motorola Solutions for the Rockdale County Emergency Management Agency for the twenty twenty-two Motorola radio subscriber maintenance package in the amount of seventy thousand six hundred eight dollars and thirty-two cents. The term is January first, twenty twenty-two through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Item three forty-three is with the Hospital Authority of Rockdale County for the District Attorney's Office. This is for the Yield Program Mental Health and Physical Fitness Program Grant in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars, is for one year and submitted for ratification. Item three forty-four is with Andrew Moeman for the Superior Court for Employment Support and Outreach Services for twenty dollars an hour, is an estimated seven thousand five hundred dollars. The term is July first, twenty twenty-two through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and this is a grant-funded expenditure. Item three forty-five is with Navcare through the Superior Court for inmate health ser- inmate healthcare services. It's change order number four to contract twenty twenty dash ninety-eight. It's to add additional services to provide customizations to the Tech Care G O Crisis Response Software for holistic public safety and health project for the Superior Court. It's an additional ninety-five thousand dollars, and the completion is June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Item three forty-six is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for Woolpert, Woolpert Incorporated for smoke testing. This is the GPS and G I S and the sewer line cleaning in Quig Branch Basin. It's an additional one hundred ninety-five thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars and forty cents. It's a new P O and the total is five hundred thirty-nine thousand six hundred sixty-two dollars and forty-six cents. Item three forty-seven is a requisition through the Water Resources Department. This is for Cedar Chem LLC for the polyaluminum chloride at seventeen cents. We are getting very specific here. Point one seven six of the dollars for the pound. Additional, it's an additional forty thousand forty dollars for a new P O for a total of one hundred four thousand one hundred and four dollars. Item three forty-eight is a requisition for the Water Resources Department for Delta Municipal for the A M I Project Radio Read in the amount of one hundred eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. Item three forty-nine is a requisition through the Rockdale County Fire and Rescue Department for American Safety and Fire Hose Incorporated for the carbon cylinder in the amount of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Item three fifty is a requisition through Technology Services for Daisys Solutions for the Cisco Phone License Maintenance in the amount of eighty-three thousand nine hundred one dollar and fourteen cents. Item three fifty-one is a requisition with E M A for the Motorola Solutions Equipment at the site of twenty-one twenty Farmer Road Northwest in the amount of sixty-six thousand four hundred forty-two dollars and forty-five cents. Item three fifty-two is a requisition through the General Services Department for the Brown Bridge Dock Company to install ADA-compliant kayak launch at Blacksholes Park in the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred forty dollars and twenty-two cents, and this is a splashed expenditure. Item three fifty-three is a requisition through the Sheriff's Office for the Law and Order Technology. It's Panasonic in-car laptops in the amount of thirty-seven thousand seven hundred seventy-one dollars and seventy-two cents, and this is a splashed expenditure. Item three fifty-four is an expenditure request with Wellstar Health Systems. This is for the Sheriff's Office and is for the inmate medical in the amount of forty-eight thousand two hundred thirty-two dollars and five cents. Item three fifty-five is a list of surplus equipment from the E M A and Animal Services Department and the Magistrate Court. Item three fifty-six is with L G I Homes, Georgia LLC. This is the dedication of public water and sewer agreement and related documentation. Item three fifty-seven is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Rockdale County, Georgia, providing for the transfer of certain tangible and real property from the Asset Forfeiture Division of the D E A. Item three fifty-eight is a future land use case, twenty twenty-two dash zero five. In ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County's comprehensive plan as amended, so as to re-designate property located at zero Highway one thirty-eight southeast, Highway one thirty-eight southeast, and twenty-ten southeast Weatherstone Circle from the commercial future land use category to the mixed-use employment center future land use category to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be for a first reading next Tuesday. Item three fifty-nine is rezoning case twenty twenty-two dash eleven. In ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning zero Highway one thirty-eight southeast from C one to R M to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a first reading next Tuesday. Item three sixty is an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Conyers and Rockdale County, Georgia, relative to the Miller Bottom Road Municipal Solid Waste Landfill Methane Mitigation Plan. This is part of the Georgia E P D Facility Permit Number one twenty-two dash zero one six D S L.
Well, well, there you have it, commissioners. Um, we will now go into public comment.
I don't have any red cards, but has anyone submitted anything for public comment?
So let me just do, for the sake of the air and the temperature and the climate, are there any citizens that like to make comment during this meeting relative to public comment at this time? Hearing none? We will now move into board comment. Start with Commissioner.
I just have one question. For the um, credcy, um, Irish Drive quarter, do we have to vote on it?
I did not have that item on the agenda for next Tuesday, but it would need to be voted on as an expenditure.
Okay, cool, thank you. Um, first of all, I would like to reiterate, reiterate my um, stance on the fact that I love the fact that we have so many um, citizens coming out to make their voices heard as a, about the mileage rate and what we're doing with their, uh, with the taxes. I've said it before that I think people wanna see their taxes. They wanna see um, a clean community. They wanna see um, controlled logical development. They wanna see where their money's going. They wanna see code enforcement. So they they wanna see their money. Um, I applaud the people that come and and make their 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 sentiments known. I especially applaud the people that come for the people that don't necessarily or can't necessarily make it and want to um, voice their opinions on their behalf. So that's always um, refreshing. Um, but once again, I do ask that those same people come to the budget hearings when we're looking at the budget, when we're trying to make budget decisions, because we have to to um, make very difficult decisions when we put the budget together for next year. Um, if anybody was of uh, present when the Sheriff's Department came and they made their comments about, um, you know, the raises, why they weren't receiving raises. All of that is a part of this. So um, once again, I I appreciate all that. And I wish that they, the same people, were still here so that they can see some of these expenses that we have that aren't the pretty, the sexy. It's, it's, it's things like um, water resources and and things that we have to do that cost a whole lot of money, but we have to have water, we have to have stormwater, we have to have other things. So all of that is your money. But those are things that aren't tangible that you might not necessarily see. That being said, let me go to Parks and Rec. I think they did an outstanding job with um, our summer concert series on Sunday. We had a great time with Brooke Alfred, who is Alfred, who is a violinist. And she did an amazing job, but she also brought a good friend of hers who is Chuck Rock, Chub Rock. And so he did like an impromptu um, concert, and uh, we had a good time. Fire rescue was there on with their their bikes, once again, um, showing up and and being present. We had an outstanding time. Um, Chub Rock was such a class act. Um, Brooke Alfred, because he came out just to support her, she tried to get us to, you know, send him a small contribution for coming out here, giving us a concert. He did like three songs or something like that. And he said, no, don't do that. I want you to put your, go and buy some school supplies for some children that don't have, aren't able to do that and take it to a school. And so, you know, the things like that um, go a long way when you're in a community. But we we had a great time, so thank you to Parks and Recreation. I think that's one of our our most um, endeared activities because so many people thank you, thank us when we do it. We we actually have a really good time. Um, this week, we finished our Leadership Development Academy. And I just, you know, I know I like to, I I I um, had a hundred percent. Um, I did all of everything. I I did everything, so I graduated with a hundred percent, um, participation, that's what they call it. But it was one of the best leadership development academies, just because you could do it at your own pace. But Colin, General Powell is is amazing, and I really do hope that we extend that opportunity to other um, people on our, in our leadership team, because it's, it was just a great opportunity. Finally, we just came back from N A C O. Um, what an awesome cons- conference. Always learn a lot with N A C O. We have some more works first development initiatives that we got ideas about. Um, stepping up was one of the premier, um, excuse me, one of the premier, um, premier programs through um, N A C O. They talked about all the time, um, the the impact that the stepping up initiatives have throughout the nation, not just on with mental health, but through criminal justice reform and how it helps um, our, our police department make better decisions because they have a dedicated place where they can, they can refer people. So always a pleasure, um, going to N A C O and and learning different ways that we can help this county move forward. Um, my, my final comment is I do wanna give my sincere condolences to the family of Jake Grover. And um, I I I wish them, you know, peace in this part of their journey. And that's.
Commissioner Williams?
And I think it's always difficult when someone leaves too soon.
Yeah.
Yeah, and unexpectedly. So um, several things. One, the rollout of nine eight eight occurred two weeks ago. And um, Georgia is ahead of the curve. And I thank uh, George Kellecheck for sending the article from the A J C that talked about how Georgia is ahead of the curve in the nation. Because now nine eight eight in Georgia will go directly to the Georgia Crisis and Access Line. And it was just simply a matter of rerouting those phone calls to the appropriate agency. Nine eight eight is a number you can call if someone is having a mental health or a substance abuse crisis, whether it's yourself, whether it's someone around you, or if you just need someone to talk to. Um, if if nationally, it, for many states that don't have this crisis line already set up, nationally, it's, it's going to the uh, National Suicide Hotline, but it will go to the Georgia Crisis and Access Line, which they are, they have the ability to send out a mobile crisis unit, to send out a, uh, to to actually place people and get services going right away. Um, speaking of that, um, my, I am sponsoring for the, this is the fourth annual nonprofit appreciation brunch. Um, it's the fifth year, but we skipped a year because of COVID. Um, so it's the fourth one. It will be held August seventeenth from ten thirty to twelve thirty at Costly Mill Park. And we will be hearing an update from the two organizations that we um, spotlighted last year, which was Grit and Grace and Global Growers Network. And then we will spotlight two more this year. Um, but since both of the ones to last year were kind of startups, we want to show what they've actually done in the last year. The uh, we met um, last week, uh, the stepping up executive team with folks from D B H D D in figuring out and analyzing what kind of facility, what kind of services would be best provided here in Rockdale County for um, that intersection of criminal justice and mental health and substance use. Behavioral health covers it all, covers both of them. Um, and so we are, Mary Lou and I are working with Chad Jones from Viewpoint Health to come up with a date to sit down and put together a comprehensive proposal to D B H D D sometime in the next few weeks. Um, our time is booked. And but we, but we are working to find something with, I think we've settled on something in two weeks, which will be better than later. Um, and in two weeks, on August seventeenth, I will catch a flight after the nonprofit appreciation brunch. And there's a group of us going to San Antonio to um, walk through and get, take a tour of really the nation's premier diversion center support system. They have, it it is really all-inclusive. Um, it's been seven years since I've visited it before when I first heard about them and stepping up initiative. Um, so I'm excited to go again. I'm sure they've improved things in seven years. They've been working on it for thirteen years when we were there before. Um, so we are moving right along. And um, we are also part of uh, convening counties' courts and some communities or something, I can't remember the three. Um, but they are working with us to create a strategic plan. And um, for the diversion center and for the sustainability of the stepping up initiative. And those, that's going along really well. Um, we meet with them once a month, but last month when we met with them, we felt like we needed to meet with them. when we met with them, we felt like we needed to meet with them twice, um, in the month to kind of pull things together. So, um, we had our second meeting last Friday, and then a week from Friday, we'll have another meeting. Um, and that, I, I have to compliment our team. Um, they are phenomenal. They are just working really hard. They're very focused. And, and they're providing resources, data, you know, information, all the things that you need to develop and sustain a successful program. Um, on August 22nd, uh, Post One and Post Two, along with, um, Lisa Chester, our constituent liaison, is sponsoring a housing forum. Um, you know, housing has been really in the forefront. And, um, we know that we have needs here in Rockdale County. And so, uh, Lisa is, has pulled together a very diverse group of people that, to attend this forum and to discuss, uh, what the, what the, to assess what the needs are in Rockdale, what the gaps are, where we need to head. Um, and in, associated with that, um, I had to go to Denver to the NACO conference to learn that Gwinnett has a, uh, very comprehen, did a comprehensive housing study, which, um, I do have a copy of. And it shows exactly how they went through that housing study. And their chair, and I can't remember her name.
Nicole Hendrickson.
Nicole Hendrickson has shared that she's willing to help us with anything we may need in looking at this housing survey. Um, my final comment is, um, I was super impressed with the very last keynote speaker at the very last general session, who told us about some of the things that his nonprofit has done. But their motto is commit, then figure it out. So, um, I guess that really touched me. I know there's been some frustration because I committed to stepping up and we've been figuring it out along the way. Um, but we're getting there. And I think, you know, sometimes we don't know the end when we start, but we just know that there's something that has to be done. And we figure it out from there. So.
Well, Commissioner, you have certainly committed. And you're right, the team and the staff and leadership, through your leadership, are figuring it out. That leads me to say to you that, do you think it's possible that when you all return from San Antonio, in addition to the information and the updates, that they made changes in the seven years, that you think it may be a good time for Mary Lou to come and do a kind of an update presentation?
Oh, absolutely.
Concerning stepping up, just to kind of let, of course, the public here, you talking about it all the time. And there's been a lot of work behind the scenes. Uh, perhaps it would be a good time. I know she presented to the executive leadership team just the other day, and I heard rave reviews. So I think maybe after the San Antonio trip, that information, plus what she's doing locally with your initiative, uh, to bring an update on it. So we would.
Absolutely.
Okay. Or maybe Chief Cave, if you can coordinate that with the Commissioner and see what we can do after the trip to San Antonio.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. And she's already prepared. The presentation's good to go. So we'll, we'll get it on the agenda.
Very good. Very good. I do, before I go into very brief comments here, I want to say thank you to both of our sheriff's deputies, uh, and to the deputies that were here earlier during the military hearing. We certainly do appreciate y'all's support. Uh, we understand that you all are, are, are tight with, with terms of staffing, but you were able to provide the support and security to stay with us throughout these hearings and this meeting. So we do appreciate you. And hats off to Sheriff Levitt and his team. Thank you to Chief McDaniel and her team, who also came in and provided, uh, uh, an additional security and support. And just made sure that we had a real organized, uh, meeting this morning with all of our citizens coming out. So I wanted to make sure, uh, I got that out before we went any further. Also, I want to, uh, bring a little bit of clarification about the wonderful, uh, job that the talent management department did with the job fair on last Friday. Uh, and the point of clarification is just this. Uh, throughout the pandemic, uh, then last year, they coined this thing, the Great Resignation. Uh, there's been so many vacancies and openings. And I'm sure citizens can see the number of now hiring, uh, help wanted signs that are scattered throughout our community. And we're certainly, we're not limited to that here in Rockdale County. But because of that, Commissioners, we've had some positions where people, after we went away during the height of the COVID, some folks never returned back to work. And it left a good number of vacancies and openings. So it was not, not necessarily new positions, but positions that were left open and vacant where we needed to make sure we had the manpower and personnel. Because in one breath, I heard a citizen make reference to the cleanliness of Parks and Recreation. And then in the other breath, I heard someone talk about not hiring additional people. Well, we're not necessarily hiring additional people. We're making sure we're filling the gaps. Uh, every industry, uh, even the educational system. There's one county that's in dire straits needs of, um, school bus drivers and even lunchroom, uh, workers to work. So we've had a good, we've been impacted in Rockdale County as well. Not just the fact that, uh, now, uh, job seekers have options in terms of, uh, pay and compensation and salary. Uh, we are competing against the fast food industry and all the other industries out there who are, uh, in need of folks. But we were just trying to close some of those gaps. We've got to have somebody to drive the lawnmower in order to cut the grass in Johnson Park. Somebody to pick up the debris when people, uh, put the debris out there. We've got to have someone to, uh, to respond to the, to the fire. The fire truck just don't work on remote control. And that's the second way to bring Chief Mac up to tell us about this brand new Quint truck that serves a dual purpose. Come on up, Chief, with all that excitement you have about this new vehicle that does all this work.
Just stand here for a moment and try not to cry. I'm so excited. But, um, truly, I am. So, uh, just Friday, there's a picture of it. Thank you, Sean, Jeanetta. You guys are awesome. Uh, that is a 2022 E1 quintuple combination pumper, also known as a Quint fire truck. A Quint, five quintuples, because it serves five functions. Uh, you have, it has the capabilities of an engine as well as a ladder. It pumps, has a water tank, uh, aerial device, ladders and all. The big thing about this is that that costs about over $700,000. However, an engine, uh, the going price now is right at $600,000. And a truck is probably right in a million, if not topping. We got two in one. So when we talk about trying to make our dollars work and stretch them, this is a perfect example. It's even more important because Rockdale County, we have over 132 square miles. We have one truck to cover it at. We have nine stations. Now, this gives us the capability of a truck and an engine. So while we don't have to wait for one coming from one place, we have this now. So it's huge. I'm excited about it. Uh, training starts on the 11th and 12th, and then we'll get it in service. But it's very huge for Rockdale County Fire Rescue.
Well, uh, uh, Chief McDaniel, we certainly appreciate your leadership and vision to bring this vehicle into Rockdale County. I won't be redundant and say all of the things that you said, but this is a big plus for the citizens of, of Rockdale County. And, and thank you so much. Thank you so much. So Chief Cave, one of the things that, listening to Chief McDaniel and even a, a few of the comments from the Commissioners earlier, it's important that we, the Board of Commissioners, particularly Post One and Post Two, are able to respond to where is the money going? Uh, I think Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams, whether they're at the grocery store, the hair salon, the park, the concert, wherever they're moving in the county, they need to be able to rattle off where the money is going. And it's not just with public safety, with the sheriff's office and fire department, but it is through Parks and Recreation. It is through transportation and water and storm water and all of those various senior services and all of those various things that takes to run the county. But they need specific bullet point things, I think, that would really help. Because when you talk about tangible and touchable items, that's really what the citizens are saying. Show me the money. Show it to me. So I think we want to, um, comprise or compile, shall I say, a list of those tangibles that both Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams can, uh, rattle off of what those things are. Uh, when multiple citizens say, well, I'm not sure. I don't see that I'm getting anything for my money. Well, we need to explain to them that there is a lot of money involved in the Rock Bridge Road, Bridge Replacement, not repair. There's a lot of money involved in running out water resources and all of these chemicals, as you may have mentioned, week after week after week, so we can have clean and safe running water in our county, to do, uh, uh, road repaving and resurfacing and potholes and all of those things in some of our subdivisions and our communities. And then the work that happens with code enforcement and our community improvement team. We have now, uh, six zones that are spread throughout the county, uh, that are diligently out there working and picking up. And let me just tell you, I, I, I empathize with the lady that said something earlier. It frustrates me every day when I drive down the road and our community improvement team have picked up a mattress, or picked up a, a bag of trash. And then the next day, there it is again. So, uh, one of the gentlemen said earlier, there are certain things that citizens can do themselves. We have a recycling center over on, uh, Sigmund Road over there. And it's a minimum fee. I mean, a very minimum fee. We have to have a fee. We have to have employees. We have to have the machines and the compactors to be able to do this and have this operation and a service for the citizen. But we have a, a service that a lot of counties and communities don't have. But when you talk about, where is the money? Show me the money. And then I really appreciate the job that Commissioner Washington has done all year long. Here we are now in the eighth month of the year, and she's been preaching and teaching economic development and talking about the importance of rooftops and how one has to work with the other. Uh, it's so important that people understand that it's not necessarily the Board of Commissioners, not the city council, that goes out and tells a company to come here. Now, there are several industries in retail and restaurants and hospitality industries we'd like to see. We love to have here in Rockdale County. But we don't necessarily come, go out there and get them. They look at the median household income. They look at all of the demographics, uh, and they have a formula, industry by industry, and they make a decision as to where they are going to go. Uh, so I think that level of education is so important that we continue to put it out there and we continue to inform people what is happening. And I do admit, as I stated earlier, we've got to do a little better job, a little different job with how we disseminate and communicate information. I'll take complete ownership on that one. However, I want to say this once again. I want to encourage the citizens of Rockdale County, just as Commissioner Washington stated. We had a packed house here earlier this morning, and, and rightfully so. Let me say it, rightfully so. However, here's the meeting that takes care and deals with the business and the spending of your money. And we hardly have a lot of folks here. We want people to be engaged all the time so that they're not getting off the cuff wrong information from someone who's creating the narrative and come to the source. The source is right here. Uh, there's the last thing I want to make sure I point out. Any citizen can file what is called an open records request. And believe you me, we get our fair share of them here in Rockdale County. However, you can simply send us an email, pick up the phone and call us and ask for whatever information that you cannot find on our county website. Our goal is to be transparent, transparent about the people's money and to make sure that we are putting it out there so you can understand it. We've listened this morning. And I've heard Chief Cave say, in collaboration with our finance department, that even the presentation from this morning's budget hearing is going to be on the website before this evening's meeting. We want everybody to have the information at their disposal and to be able to access it. And finally, Commissioners, I do want to say, I really appreciate the level of order and discipline and respect in the way that the meeting this morning was conducted by both the citizens, our staff, the support of our sheriff's office, the support of our fire department. People were in order. People came up and they were able to express and explain in their own way. Uh, we afforded everybody an opportunity to be able to talk. And that's what a democracy, as Commissioner Williams has already pointed out, is all about. Giving folks the opportunity to be heard. They are taxpayers and they have the right to be heard. Uh, Director, uh, Kelly, is there any update before I close this meeting out? Uh, I referenced the Rock Bridge Road. Uh, is there any update that we can provide for the citizens? You can move forward as I talk, uh, for the citizens in the Lake Capri area, the Rock Bridge Road area. I want to make sure that we're giving them the latest, greatest information as you and your team are working behind the scenes to get this bridge back in, in order.
Good morning, Commissioner. Uh, good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Um, absolutely. Yes, yes. So we are moving forward. Currently, we're on a pretty good clip. Um, we have our utilities gone going in Lake Capri. So all the utilities on that bridge are being removed. You'll see it as you drive through there. Now, I invite you to drive through. Um, we have the, all the, uh, safety barriers up. But, um, you were able to see the utilities, the new, uh, gas lines being bored. So all their equipment is, is, is out there now. They're on each side of the bridge and they're, they're actively working. So that, uh, we're looking at two months with that. And then we have our bridge, uh, still scheduled to come in, uh, first part of August. So we're still waiting. They're still manufacturing that. Um, ER Snell is, is looking into ways to expedite that because we still, we're looking for that October date. So we're working hard to make sure this works. And we're trying to double team with all the, uh, all of the stakeholders to get that project back up and running and get that road open again. I also had enough more information if you, if you, if you're available for, um, Frontier Road. We're looking at that one, too.
Well, I, I appreciate the Frontier Road, but I won't stop you with the Rock Bridge Road. I don't want to mix the two together at all. Sometimes that's, that's another piece of that communication thing. Sometimes you combine, uh, the key line with the strawberry. It doesn't always work out just the way you want it to. Uh, but I will say what you just said regarding the Rock Bridge Road, Bridge Replacement, and the update is that utility companies are putting in the infrastructure and they're working very diligently on both sides of the road. You also invited, but I want to say this, let's not invite onlookers out there. I think we've got enough traffic that's moving through the Lake Capri area as it is. But just for those people that live in the Rock Bridge Road area, the Lake Capri area, we want to make sure they are aware that utilities are being put out by the utility companies. That's happening as we speak. And that we're on track with the, the, receiving the bridge to actually come in. This is a good update. Uh, I want to ask that you be prepared. Uh, so you can, uh, provide us another update in a, in a couple of weeks or so. And a, as we can announce to the folks out in the Lake Capri area, uh, what's happening with the Rock Bridge Road Bridge. It's been a, a long wait and it's been a very long of an inconvenience. But because we want to do this right and thinking forward, we're not doing patchwork. We're certainly doing a complete replacement and it takes time to do that. So we'll do that. Uh, now, I got all that out. So we checkmark that. We'll go on with the Frontier Road because I want to think about those folks up there, too. They, they want to know what's happening with them as well.
So right now, we're finishing the design. We're working on the utility design for that. And we're in acquisitions. So we're finalizing the last few, roughly four, uh, write-up acquisitions. And we're, once we get that, we're making sure the utility design for the new road alignment works. So that's where we're at with that one. Um, and we're coordinating with a couple of agencies to try and expedite that as well. So we can bid that out.
So let me kind of translate that one a little bit. What Director Kelly just said, a lot of folks hadn't heard a lot about the, uh, Frontier Road of the, uh, uh, Lakeview Estates, sometimes known as Sunrise Estates. Well, that particular Frontier Road has been out for a number of years. From a safety hazard on that tail end of the road, the improvements that are making. the improvements that are making will allow us to be able to do things, uh, in terms of moving traffic and vehicles through there, uh, once everything is put in place. So I wanted to make sure I, I pointed that out. Now, anything on the Curtis and Parkway, the big one?
We're still waiting for our infra grant. Uh, we did just get a, a letter, um, from DOT about, uh, uh, being pre-approved for TFI.
Well, you need to make it sound like it's good news because it's good news.
It is. Oh, no, it definitely is.
You just heard all these citizens talking about saving money. So you need to speak up. I need you to smile and get excited when you start talking about getting some money in here. That's what they want to hear.
So we're still waiting. We're, we're waiting to hear, hear, hear back on that, and we're still feeling good about that. Looking forward to getting some more information. We're finalizing details for the, the design on that as well with GDOT. So we're working hard on that, finishing that design up.
Director Kelly, before you take your seat, uh, ladies and gentlemen, commissioners, Director Kelly had his own personal intern this morning with him. His beautiful daughter, what is, what is her name?
Avon Kelly.
Ms. Avon Kelly, twelve-year-old, aspiring leader. She was shadowing her daddy this morning. Had his own intern here this morning with him, uh, checking out the BOC meeting. So we thank you. Let's give Director Kelly a round of applause. Wonderful job he's doing. Thank you so much, Director Kelly. Director Relig, is there any, uh, chief, any updates from your office?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to announce to, uh, you and all the citizens, um, we have the presentation from the military. It is actually on the website right now.
Oh, it's already there.
It is available.
That's PDQ. Pretty darn quick. Thank you. All right. All right. Direct, Director Relig, any need for executive session?
No, Mr. Chairman, but we will be back here at six o'clock tonight.
See you at six o'clock. This meeting is adjourned.